Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. It is now five, I'm sorry, six oh three. This clock here says five, six oh three. And today is June 2nd, uh, 2020. And I called to order the meeting at the Victorville City Council, Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Accessor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District and the City Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
Here. At this time, we will have the invocation, uh, by Pastor Dane Davis of Impact Christian Church in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger, so please stand.
Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Garcia. In Psalm 133, we read a verse that's so timely for us this week. It says, "How good and pleasant it is when brothers live together in peace and unity." And a few chapters earlier, King David writes, "Unless the Lord builds the house, its builders build in vain; unless the Lord watches over the city, its watchmen stand guard in vain. For vain, you rise early and stay up late, toiling for food to eat; but God grants sleep to those who he loves." Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we all agree with the psalmist, saying it is good and pleasant when we live together in peace and unity. And Lord, our nation is in turmoil right now, Lord, wrestling with the tragedy of last Monday, crying out for justice, crying out for peace, crying out for answers. And God, this is one of those times in our lives where perhaps more than any other time, we realize we don't have all the answers and we don't have all the solutions, we don't have all the wisdom. And so, Lord, our founding fathers had the wisdom to found this nation by calling on you because, Lord, we need your guidance. We must have your guidance, we must have your leadership and your wisdom today. Lord, it's not just a problem in in New York City, Lord, or Los Angeles, or Santa Monica, or other cities around this nation. Lord, we have challenges here in Victorville. And so, here our leaders are tonight, Lord, ready to meet together. I pray for peace and unity in the proceedings. I pray that you'd give them guidance and wisdom, Lord, that's beyond their years and beyond their own wisdom. Lord, we pray you would speak into the situation. And Lord, give them guidance as to how best to move forward as a city, Lord, to move this population of some hundred and twenty thousand plus people together in peace and unity, Lord, in a way hopefully that brings honor and glory to you. Lord, be with our leaders, protect them, especially be with Dr. Ramirez tonight, Lord. We pray for health and strength and goodness in her life by your hand, in Jesus' name.
And to the republic for which it stands, peace and justice for all. At this time, I would like to say that, uh, we are very happy to have our city clerk back again and thank God that, uh, she's feeling well and, uh, recovered from her surgery and, uh, welcome back and we missed you. So, uh, now would you like to go to work, Ms. City Clerk, and present the agenda and revisions to the agenda?
The City Council welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item is requested to complete a speaker card. You just go ahead and bring it up here and I will make sure it's read or called up to the podium. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council, not to the members of the audience. Individuals should not approach the dais unless authorized by the presiding officer. In accordance with state law, the City Council may not take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. The presiding officer may request a peace officer to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. And there are no revisions to report, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, uh, thank you so much. Don't say that on my, um, agenda, but I need a declaration of, uh, closed session items by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, we had two items this evening. The first was, um, Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code 54957B, the position title, City Manager. The second item was on the addendum and that was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2. The facts and circumstances pertaining to that litigation were set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to either one of those items.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, at this time, if there is a conflict of interest from any council member on any item on the agenda, will you please, uh, speak up and let us know? So, we move on then to, uh, public hearings. We do have one pla- uh, public hearing. Uh, number one, determination to fix levy and collect standby charges. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, please read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the following resolutions. Resolution number VWD 20-008, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District making its determination to fix levy and collect standby charges for water improvement district number one for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and resolution number VWD 20-009, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District making its determination to fix levy and collect standby charges for water improvement district number two for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? I'll start with, um, Councilmember Cox.
I have no questions, thank you.
Jones?
I have none, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Gomez?
I have a few selection of questions for clarification in context with us sitting as the Water District Board. Um, so the first question is, um, is this agenda item connected to the sewer fund? And does the City Council have any say in the levy collection and standby collections of its taxes? The last question is, is this item speak of the liens that the assessor's office receives from the city when bills aren't paid? Yeah, is this item, um, connected with liens that the assessor's office receives when the city does not receive the bills paid from its constituents or residents that are having that service?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, the answer to that is no. This is slightly different, in fact, it's quite a bit different. Uh, these are dealing investments that are levied against the properties, uh, effective districts, whether it's District One for O and M related purpose or, uh, District Two for, um, uh, debt service related purposes, capital related purposes. Uh, and in both of these cases, because there are properties that aren't connected to the system but get the benefit of being, uh, proximate to, uh, uh, that's the purpose for these respective charges. Uh, the way the process works is we do this annually. Uh, we started with this process May 5th where we initiated the proceedings to bring this item forward, uh, to where we're actually, um, approving the levying of these investments. Uh, once the council approves this item via resolution, then we turn all of the parcel related information into the county assessor's office, uh, so that they can actually establish the charges on the rolls for all property tax bills that effectively start going out, I think and probably.
Thank you for the clarification, I have no further questions.
Rita, do you have any questions?
No ma'am.
And I have none. At this time, I open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
I close the public hearing and I need a motion and a second, on item one.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors, um, take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
And I, Councilmember Gomez goes ahead and makes the second to that motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez, any further comments? All those in favor? I'll take a roll call vote.
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Cox?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
Good, and I did remove my mask. I have social distancing and.
Yours is the quietest, so you have to speak right next to it.
Okay, now we move on to consent counter. We have consent counter items two through four and they can be approved wi- with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
I don't want to pull anything, I would just like to provide a comment on the fiscal, uh, commercial demand schedule.
Which item is that?
This is consent calendar, it doesn't have the tab enumerated like it usually does. Just Administrative Services Department.
Item three, I believe.
Item three?
That works. Okay, so the comment is just, um, I kind of have a general bird's eye view of looking at, um, our commercial demands and when I see something that doesn't follow patterns or trends, I mean, COVID-19 would be explicatory, however, I'm not one of the staff members that has delved deeply in this. So, the eight point nine million dollars that is, um, being transferred with the commercial demands is part of the pay, but, um, if it's possible to provide a brief explanation and if it is COVID-19, um, I can see why that trend would not follow as typical as I have seen within the last three to four years.
Um, I'm sorry, are you speaking to a specific item or is this a trend related to the total expenditure?
The second, yes, just trends.
Well, there's no real consistent trend, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor and members of the council, um, speaking to the, the question, there's, there's not a very typical trend when it comes to the commercial demand because there's ebbs and flows throughout the year, um, based upon expenditure levels, uh, an example would be certain capital projects being built at differing times during the year, not consistent from one fiscal year to the other, just depend, based upon the nature in which capital improvements, um, are, are built out. So, um, you know, if there's something specific that, that, that you had a question or comment on, we can, we can speak. I, I don't think it's. Friend that we experience with these.
Let me qualify, just as a comment, I don't need a response. Um, the trends that I follow is, um, at least five million and below. Anything that exceeds five million to me doesn't follow a trend. So, seeing it eight point nine million, just kind of, I wanted to see if there was something out of the norm that's procedural that perhaps I've missed, um, being here about just four years. And that's, that's what I considered a, a trend. I'm not very specific because I'm just an outsider looking at these budget numbers and I haven't sat in any reporting meetings. Thank you.
I need a motion in a second.
Other questions, Madam Mayor, move. Approval consent counter.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones, any further comments? I'll take a roll call vote, Councilmember Cox?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Mash- motion passes unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications and it's item number five. That the City Council consider possible revisions to the City Council Policy and Procedures Manual as it relates to the term of mayor, Mayor Protem, and the conduct of closed session. At this time, uh, I will ask our council members if they have any questions, they have three minutes, um. Mr. Cox?
I, I don't have any questions, so.
Jones? Uh, just, um, because we have three subjects on this, I just have a couple with regard to the conduct of closed session. Excuse me.
What?
I, I just have a couple of questions, um, for our city attorney with regard to the conduct of closed session. Um, and so my first question would be, has any harm been done to the city since the revision to the policy manual of October 3rd, 2019, um, that ceased the practice of recording closed session?
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and prior to this, um, latest revision to the policy manual, closed sessions had been recorded, uh, um, for about seven or so years and I understand that that was a voluntary practice by the, the then council. Was there any measurable benefit gained by making any of those recordings?
Again, not that I'm aware of, no.
And in your tenure as the city's attorney, was there ever a time when you would have liked to have had a recording of closed session because it would have improved the city's position in litigation?
Uh, certainly not, I think, to the contrary, it can actually harm the city in a lot of litigation matters. Um, it, 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 uh, pre- prevents essentially candid discussions amongst council members to discuss strategies. And as you know, closed sessions are confidential. Uh, to the extent there was ever any concern that something was being done inappropriately, there are provisions in the Brown Act whereby there is a remedy for people to seek basically, uh, a review and a recording through the district attorney's office. So, I don't think it's necessary, I think it curbs your ability to have frank, candid discussions regarding, uh, sensitive matters.
And then, Madam Mayor, um, just a, a quick question with regard to, oh, um, the term of the mayor. I'm, I'm trying to understand because there was, when this was first brought up, oh, almost two months ago, I, I wasn't real clear as to what, what the end goal was. So, is, is it, um, generally the pleasure of a few of our council members to take this policy back, back to the way it was directly before the October 3rd, 2019 revision? Which would effectively, um, um, remove the concept of that extra vote being required after two consecutive, um, years in an elected's term of office? If, if that's the goal, that would just deal with the final sentence on page two of the policy manual.
When I have my turn to speak, I will clarify that.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Yes, so, Councilmember Gomez is speaking and this is for the benefit of our Mayor Protem, who's on the phone, so hopefully, um, she follows along. I know it's very difficult to hear. My question, um, really are in regards to the first two questions. I couldn't make out the understanding for Councilmember Jones. They weren't repeated and I didn't want to interrupt her, but I for sure want to understand what she was trying, the outcome to be, I just heard two responses. Despite three responses, I understood fully the third one, but I didn't understand the response to her inquiries for the first two because I didn't understand the interpretation of the question. Perhaps I, I, it wasn't very, if she, if she would be able to ask it in a different question, I just felt like it just went overhead. The, I didn't understand that, I, I want to perceive what she was trying to get there. And the last one is, um, I didn't understand that two consecutive year and the fourth vote. I would like to understand that as well because this is very critical to how we're going to be voting tonight. So, I don't know if she can re-ask or restate them and it's just for my understanding, that's it. I'm not trying to debate anything here.
Sure, is it the mayor's pleasure?
Uh, Rita, do you have any questions right now?
Yes, um, I would like to say, after reading the section referred to as Chapter Two, Role of the City Council, Section Two, uh, General Election and Governance, I went through and simplified the wording and I think I simplified it so that everyone on the City Council has the opportunity to become mayor and Mayor Protem. And, uh, I would like to read the changes that I've made accordingly as the policy manual reads. The city of Victorville is governed by a five-member city council to a four-year term on a staggered basis. Council members are elected in the general election in November of every numbered years. The mayor and the Mayor Protem will be elected, that is the first change, by a majority vote of the entire membership of the City Council. The City Council shall elect, second change, shall elect the mayor and the Mayor Protem for one-year terms at the regular meeting in December of every year or so thereafter as feasible and when applicable following the certification of newly elected, of the newly elected results of a candidate. And, excuse me, and, uh, seating of, the seating of the new City Council chamber. The newly elected, and again, that's the third change, Mayor and Mayor Protem assume their position immediately following the maj- the majority vote. That's it, no more to be said. It simply says that everyone in the month of December who is seated as a City Council person will have the opportunity to seek the office of Mayor and Mayor Protem. And based on their leadership skills of that year that they are elected, they have the privilege and the opportunity to continue their leadership if there is a majority vote in their favor. That's it, that's all that needs to be said. And that's how I look at the, um, election of the mayor and Mayor Protem. It is a one-year term. It is to be done as listed in the policies every December and it gives everyone the right to be, or hopefully be, a mayor or a Mayor Protem. Those are my considerations and I would like to make a motion to, uh, say that this would be what I would like to see in the new policy manual. Simply the deletion and the omission of anything else after the word majority.
You have twenty seconds?
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I, I will echo everything that she said. Uh, but first of all, I would like to say that, uh, I acknowledge the fact that I was in error when I voted to change the referenced item, which is the Chapter Two, Role of City Council, Page Two, Item Two of Council, Election and Governance. Um, I acted outside of the Brown Act guidelines and first of all, I would like to say that I am sorry for that. I am not a person that likes to be outside of, uh, the law. I like to be law-abiding and if I make a mistake, I will be the first one to admit it and if I need to correct myself, I am big enough and small enough, whichever you want to call me, to admit it. And I admit that I was actually acting out of the, um, guidelines. Therefore, um, I do feel that we need to make revision to that motion and, uh, but I understand what, uh, Mayor Protem, uh, Ramirez has, um, actually, um, made a motion, uh, for a vote to, uh, elect the mayor and the Mayor Protem for a one-year term, is that correct, Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
So, um, that's your motion then, uh, the mayor and the Mayor Protem be elected for one year, uh, and, uh, and based on just majority of vote?
On by majority vote, yes, that is my motion.
Mayor, if I might, first, I believe you have some speaker cards. Um, secondly, you know, the, the question of elected versus appointed. The only concern I have is there are cities where the mayors are actually elected by the popular vote of the people and so I think using that word creates some ambiguity. We are not one of those cities. We, you are elected by the, the members of the public to sit as a council member. The role of the mayor is typically always being, quote, by appointment, which is the same thing you do with committees. So, it, to me, it just creates ambiguity.
It'd be appointed, okay, either way.
So, the word appointed and elected are not the same. Terminology is very significant here, no. The word appointed simply means that you can also be removed. Elected means there's, the vote has to be taken in order for you to be removed.
But Rita, we're.
Not the legal term.
Ri- Rita.
Not the legal term.
Time is up.
There is no difference in terms of the councils having to vote for an appointment or, you know, to use the word election. To be the mayor, the Mayor Protem requires a vote of a majority of the council, either way.
Rita, is that clear to you now?
Concern I have is.
Not happy with it, no. I don't, I don't accept what he has said. I don't, uh, understand his terminology because English is very significantly important. And when a person elects, it is not the same as being appointed. That is not the case. When you're saying elected, you're talking about a majority vote. When you're appointed, you're appointed by one individual, basically. So therefore, the terminology of English is significant here and this is the reason why I don't agree. I have made three changes in the policy as listed in the policy that we have and that simply, I have changed the word appointed to elected and nothing else. I have not changed the term of office. I feel that after the word majority vote, uh, and omitted and deleted the rest, gives everyone the opportunity and the knowledge that they have, they can be, if they want to be, mayor or Mayor Protem and they know that based on their leadership skills, they're able to be reelected as many times as they wish depending upon their desire to be mayor or Mayor Protem. I am not. I am not making any determination as to coup or how long. I'm simply saying is that the word elected is not the same as the word appointed. Elected says that you are selected and voted by majority vote by your peers.
Uh Rita, I'm sorry, your time is up. It's um
So it's a question of legality and terminology.
Okay.
My point.
Oh, okay.
Now.
Uh, alright.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion. Um and that would be that we keep the words appointed um as it, it currently exists in the policy manual on page two, section two. Um and then strike the final sentence um in that section beginning and so I'm going to read what the proposal is to strike. Effective commencing with the twenty twenty council member terms, the following provisions shall apply. In no event shall a council member serve as the mayor for more than two consecutive years per his or her term of office unless additional service is granted by a two-thirds.
Go too fast, please.
I'm sorry. I'm just reading what's in the policy manual. So it's just um unless additional service is granted by two-thirds affirmative vote of the entire council membership. So it just sounds like um the original motion was to strike exactly what I, I suspected might um be the du- desire of many on the council. So the substitute motion is to do effectively that, to keep the words appoint or appointed as currently exists in the policy manual and striking the last um sentence in that section, though lengthy, that deals with the um terms of office um in that there's a requirement of an extra vote after two consecutive years.
And I would also like to do a substitute motion underneath Jones. And I would like to keep the spirit of what Rita has projected to change the terminology from appointed to elected with the caveat of printing within the same policy what we intend the word elect to take away that ambiguity that Mr. Diburnowski has expressed that generically is shown, not narrowly in other cities. And to make sure that that majority is indeed three people and not four people for clarification.
Um, I'm going to second the mo- substitute motion of council member Jones, but I want to have a discussion.
I do too.
Do you also have
Have comments.
Comment cards?
Well, I, I think, I, I know there's comments, but uh this is the councils right now if I might, I would like to. I'm not sure, I don't care if it's appointed or elected, but there's a, there's a lot of cities that have an elected, elected council members, they've elected mayor. We do not have elected mayor. We have an appointed mayor by the council. And legally, it's the same. The attorney's made it clear. He is the city attorney. I realize that individual councilmen have a different opinion. There's no connotations that goes by it at all. The city council can appoint, the city council can take away, the city council can call it an election by the council members. By the way, if you change it to election, you have to say by the members of the council because it's not elected by the public. And so, and, and there's, you know, well, if you're elected, somehow there's a legal, no, there's not. I, I ju- I just disagree with that and I'd like to, I think the attorney's made it clear. Normally, the city council nominates, member council nominates, city council appoints. And that has just as much status and standing as elected mayor that goes out to the public and has an elected mayor. Barstow has elected mayor. Th- that's totally different. You want to remove the council, the council can't do it. Uh, Atalanta's the same. Atalanta, Hispar- uh, Apple Valley, Hispari, Vicville have an appointed mayor. In our tradition under this is to have an appointed mayor. So there is a misunderstanding. Although maybe that would be a misunderstanding, I feel one way and apparently uh Rita feels a different way. I respect the opinion. But I respectfully believe that she's wrong legally in regard to the difference between an elected council member and an appointed. I, I would hope that it's always within the authority of this council to appoint the mayor and the mayor pro temp. And whether it's one year or two years, I don't care. If she wanted it one year, that's fine. I have no objection to that. Uh, in fact, I have no objection to what the city council really want to do, but in fact, the public has to understand. The public must understand what's, what's going on. So uh if we've, if we've appointed forever and that's been okay, if it's going to be changed to elected, please have elected by the members of the city council because it isn't elected by the public and that's the general connotation when you talk about it.
And with, if I might, Mayor, with respect to the word appointment, it requires a majority vote to appoint. So the language currently requires, you have to, if any change requires a majority vote, that's clear in the manual.
And majority of vote is?
Three, at least three people of the council.
Of the full membership. And, and w- we appoint by vote our planning commissioners and there's not been a concern with that language ever.
Well, that's my understanding is that we appoint the mayor, we appoint the mayor pro temp uh by majority of vote.
Al- also for point of clarification, to the extent depending whatever the motion is that you all decide on, this needs to come back via a resolution and be adopted by a resolution. So whatever you got, direct me to do, we will put it into a resolution and bring it back at the next council meeting. But I do need direction as to what the council wants to do.
Well, for the purposes of conversation.
I can't, pardon?
If, if I may also chime in because I know um Mr. Cox chimed in the second, so I would like to converse on that venue. Um, I do hear the spirit within saying elect by the members of the council. You reverberate what Rita has stated in that same narrative despite the fact that perhaps the tonality of Mr. Cox's tone would not like to go that way and would fare to say, let's stick with what Mr. Diburnowski has stated. But analyzing that statement, I think if Mr. Cox was willing to, he can definitely allow that language and have the city attorney to verbatim have it. And any language that would come into any litigation would hold because the intent of this council would be specified with the verb usage, its definition, like Mr. Diburnowski knows with contracts or any types of settlement, which he works heavily on. And so that's my opinion in that conversation that was just had now. Thank you.
I do have some public comment card. Um Maggie Martin?
Honored counsel, it's great to see you guys again. I'm glad everybody is well. I actually prepared this on May nineteenth when I was listening from home and couldn't get it, you know, my technical issues, get it over here. So this is regarding, I'm just going to read it as it is. Uh, item fifteen, that was the last um agenda, mayoral term and closed session items. Okay. Um, greetings, city council. Number one, agenda item fifteen. This item was voted in by the council and now they want to rescind it. There will be no harm done by leaving it in place until after the election. It isn't even relevant until the, excuse me, until the twenty twenty-two reorganization takes place. That said, currently, the rescinding of this, of the current policy will cause overall harm to the council because the public's perception will be that the council is whimsical when making decisions that they have not well thought out prior to casting their votes. That will not reflect well on the council or reinforce the public's support. Furthermore, this agenda item begs the following two questions. Number one, what is the motive or reasoning for rescinding it? Because I haven't heard any yet. And number two, is it to further a certain council member's political agenda that is being kept secret by them and from the constituency in order to maintain their positions on the council? Thus far, there's no transparency here whatsoever. Um, number two, recording of closed session items, this is a terrible and potentially bad, bad move. Let's not forget when the city was in a litigation matter and council member Gomez went to the opposing party with confidential information. It does not get any worse than that, a council member who is willing to bring harm to the city's interest. Thank you.
Ramero Rodriguez?
Good afternoon, everyone. I've been coming here pretty much to the meeting since um since twenty thirteen, fourteen, around there, uh sitting in the back like a fly, listening to what's going on. Um, to me, it's not the same elected and appointed. Elected is a hundred and twenty-two thousand people go out there and vote for our mayor. Elected, that's what it means to me. It's democracy. Appointed, you have an ace under your, your hands, under your sleeve. We saw that. We saw somebody get elected. I mean, appointed. They didn't like the results. So let's jimmy it up again. You know what? We want to give him just only for one year, not for two years. Now, they can change it. They can, if they don't like the results, they can say, we want to change it to just one month. And as soon as they get that person out of there, they can change it back to four years or six years. So to me, what it was is just something that's happening right now that they, uh, a certain group of people, which is actually five, instead of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, are deciding for our mayor and they're trying to pass it off as an election. It's an appointment. You don't like the person you appointed because it, it devaluates or unbalances the power that you want or the voting precedent that you want, so you change the rules. The team is making nothing but three pointers, so you change, you know what? The only count is two points. So we're seeing that happening right now. That's how I see it, sitting over there. You can say no all you want. That's how I see it. It might be in the rules, but we can change the rules. The rules are written by men. They're not cemented in concrete. I know it's been run that way. We've never had the problem with the elections before. There, there was never this problem. All of a sudden, Ms. Garcia was elected because somebody else wanted, and somebody else didn't like the results. So they're doing all this, changing all the rules. We have this twice in the calendar today. We have it twice and it's been going on week after week after week and arguing. We, they, you guys elected her? Everybody approved? You just want to take her out again? But you know what? I don't think it's proper. I see it. It's more racial to me. It might not be to you. But that's how I see it and many people see it. You can say no all you want, but an election is one thing. An appointment is something else. You can change it. Five people can change it very easily. And it's harder for a hundred and twenty-two thousand people. And they can be taken out too. You have elections and they can be uh redacted out. But that's how I see it. I've been seeing this for the last few months since that day. And that word was almost used, but they just held back a little bit. But that's how I see it. And this is just an appointment, which is a lot easier to control the narrative than to have a hundred and twenty-two thousand people vote. That way, five people or three people or two people can decide the outcome. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I want to correct the record with one thing. No one on this council, no one has suggested of, of having you replaced. That has never been up. Mr. Romero has hinted at it several times. It is absolutely, totally untrue. It's never come up. There's never been a proposal. There's never been a discussion to do that. And I would be a hundred percent against it. Now, I don't know why he insists on raising that and try to divide. It's simply not true. And he knows that.
Ruth Cordova?
Ruth Cordova. The intentional, willful, deliberate, and wrongful racist accusations against honorable Anglo council members, division of law enforcement and its community, made with malicious intent to cause a civil unrest among the Latino and Anglo community as it's, has been established by a pattern and practice of malicious acts and wrongful racist accusations on the part of the commenter. Therefore, I ask that serious criminal charges be taken into full consideration of any and all conspirators, co-conspirators, aiders and abidders should a civil unrest occur, given rise to the charges of the state of California, California Penal Code, section four oh four, inciting a riot, civil unrest, and that additional charges of the obstruction of justice for those that attempt to prevent law enforcement in the lawful performance of their duties. There is no race. Never has been any, any race.
I do have a substitute motion by council member Gomez. And hers was to I believe mirror what Ramirez's motion was to use the word elect. Is there any changes that you had from Ramirez?
Yes, it was to incorporate the understanding of the description legally, what the intent that we have
Got it.
meant.
Is there a second? There be no second, that motion dies. The next substitute motion was by council member Jones and there was a second by council member Cox to strike the last sentence in the uh policy, council policies and procedures manual, and to use the word appointed. Is there any further comments on that motion?
A clarification. Does that mean it would stay the same?
The word appointed would stay, the last sentence where it, the attorney could better off, better explain.
The provision regarding the term um commencing twenty twenty, that language at the end is all being deleted. So it remains the same with basically one-year terms and you all get to decide every time the mayor, based on an appointment by a majority vote of the council.
The motion made by council member Jones, seconded by council member Cox. All those in favor? I'll take a roll call vote.
I have comments. I have comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, thank you, ma'am. I'm Madam Mayor. Right. Okay, so um, to be very clear, um by striking that last sentence, we're effectively going to put the, this particular policy back to the way it was just prior to the October third twenty nineteen revision. And I just, um, I think it's very important to note that, that that revision um came as a result, uh, the October revision came as a result of five and a half months of um, um drafting and input and feedback um by this council. And the vote was um three-one on that with Mayor Pro Tem absent, but having prior to the meeting um expressed that she was fine with all the, the revisions that were taking place uh in the policy manual. So um that was several months, of course, once it was adopted, that was several months before the organizational meeting in December. So um I, I'm not going to go into a lot except that I, I don't understand the hullabaloo because we had three council, four council members effectively that were in favor of this and I, I don't know why this is being um becoming such an issue because it wouldn't really come up until December of twenty twenty-two organizational meeting. And all it would require if someone wanted to serve um an extra year would be an additional vote. But it seems to be important to a few council members and I don't think it's worth dying on the sword over. I'm um fine with the um policy as it stood before October third. The, the concern that I do have is that we, we just in October made this policy. It, it hasn't been tested at all. And so um for me, just from a perspective of good business practice, it just comes across as um rather irregular. And I, I'm concerned um that I'm certainly going to vote in favor of this, that, that doing so is going to give this council, all of us voting on this favorably, is going to give the council the appearance of instability and indecisiveness. And I just don't think that that works in favor of inspiring confidence in leadership. But um I'm happy um to change this back to the um policy that we had um before the October third revision because it, it's important to my team and I'm um happy to do that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I urge you vote for this because the city council appointed the mayor. We're going to support the mayor. We have not, no one has raised the question of removing the mayor. We need to put this to bed and get on with it. Our mayor is going to continue and we need to stop this nonsense. Really do. It's just gotten out of hand and, you know, those people who want to divide are trying to, but our mayor is the mayor, going to continue to be the mayor. We're going to support the mayor and all this other garbage. We need to just turn a deaf ear to it.
So as it stands right now, that uh, that paragraph where it reads, in no event shall a council member serve as mayor for more than two consecutive years, is that uh, is that remaining or are we?
It, it would actually start before that with the sentence that starts. It, it would actually start before that with the sentence that starts effective commencing with the twenty-twenty council member terms.
Yeah, so that entire.
So, so that entire last sentence would be stricken if there's a favorable vote.
Again, this will come back in the form of a resolution, assuming you give me that direction.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
A clarification. Uh, I, I asked for it formally, but, um, the mayor asked for a question, and it seems, though there is no two years, it would go back to one year, and it'd be three votes, and then it would be elected. Is that, that's the way we're?
Everything is correct, except not elected, appointed by three votes. So it would go back to one-year terms, and it would be an appointment by a majority of the council members.
Appointment again, meaning three.
Of the entire membership.
Oh, no. No, I haven't heard the opinions of others that I value, so my, it's no.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Ramirez?
Of everything that has been said, please repeat the motion.
Um, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to do that. Or the clerk can do it. Sure.
I, too many people have been saying so many different things. I don't know exactly what you're voting on. I need to have clarification.
Attorney will give you clarification.
Motion is to bring back a resolution at the next meeting whereby the current language that's in Chapter Two, Section Two, will remain the same, namely that the city council shall appoint the mayor, Mayor Protam, for one-year terms at the first regular meeting. That requires a, um, three-member, a majority vote of the entire membership of the council. The last line, the last sentence, which starts with the language effective commencing in the twenty-twenty-two council member terms, all of that language will be deleted. So it will go back to read the same way it was prior to the October seventeenth, I think it was twenty-nineteen meeting.
Gloria, I need for you to repeat it for me because he is not clear at all.
Uh, it is exactly what you're asking for, Rita. It'll go back to the way it was before, and those two sentences will be deleted. The, the only difference, the only difference is that it's appointed, not elected.
In other words, the, the word elected is to be omitted and appointed is to be kept? Is that what we're saying?
Correct, because we are not elected by the people. We're appointed by the council.
That's not the meaning of the word. Anytime that you take a vote, you are elected. That is the definition of the word elected. Whenever you take a vote and you are voted in by majority vote, that is elected. It's not appointed. Appointed is one person doing the selection. So the terminology here is not correct, legally speaking. But what you're saying to me right now, that the motion is saying that we are going to keep the policy as read up to the point of majority vote? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
For clarification?
Yes.
I want to know whether the following is to be included, effective commencing with twenty-twenty. Are we still keeping everything after that? Are we still keeping that?
No, the motion was to strike that.
Okay.
That will be deleted.
I will, I will concede. I will recognize. Thank you.
So your vote is yes? Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Yeah, resolution, uh?
Correct. I'll bring that back with that language in it at the next council meeting.
The next council meeting. Very well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Rita.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, now we move on to, um, Item number six.
Didn't we have comments for that one?
Oh, I thought we did. Um, we move on to item number six, Discussion Regarding Placement of General Transaction and Use Tax on the November twenty-twenty ballot. Uh, Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council direct the city manager to prepare an agenda item that authorizes the placement of a transaction in use tax measure on the November ballot.
Councilmembers, you will have three minutes, uh, if you have any questions. Uh, Ms. Jones?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Could I ask our city manager to introduce this item and give some background information for those that weren't present at our last regu- regular meeting, um, to know how all of this evolved to the place that we are today?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Um, this item is, is to discuss the placement of a general transactions and use tax on the November ballot. And it's a unique opportunity for a city to be able to place this kind of item on a ballot. Uh, there's a lot of people think that we, as an elected body, I'm sorry, you, um, as an elected body, have the authority to independently, uh, impose taxes for services, and, and you really don't. Uh, but you do have it within the authority, and it's a you can, a unique authority, uh, to be able to actually put a measure before the, uh, voters, so that the voters can actually consider whether or not they want to, want to accept a form of tax, uh, in exchange for services.
Yes, I, I heard him. Thank you.
All right, continue.
So I, I think that the important part that I want to draw attention to is, is just that. Before I talk a little bit about how we got here and, and where we could potentially go with this item. But this is really a discussion about whether or not you want to give the right to your residents to actually vote on a measure, to consider, um, a tax that would effectively expand our public services. And so this resulted, uh, starting from a conversation you all had as a council directing me back in November of two thousand nineteen to prepare a public safety plan. And the, the genesis for that, I believe, had a lot to do with the constant communication we would receive from our public, uh, including at these, in these chambers, to where there's been a demand for an increase in our, uh, public safety services. So I accepted that, that task and actually presented to you at our May nineteenth meeting, the work product that really analyzed all of our public safety programs. So that included your police department, that included your fire department, that included code enforcement and animal control. And those are really the four elements that we identify with public safety because they all have some form of interrelationship with, with one another. And, you know, one of the things that we found, and, and we're actually glad to have done the report. And, and I will point out that the report does include recommendations, recommendations that this council's not, uh, fixed to, to adopt. It certainly can consider them, uh, and alter them as, as time progresses. You have absolute discretion, presuming, of course, there's revenues, um, available, such as what the, the transactions and use tax would provide. You certainly have it within your flexibility to identify differently where priority expenditures should be made. But altogether, what we were able to identify as a part of that study was that altogether, the cost of service over the last twenty years, and that's what we studied, uh, has dramatically outpaced, um, the actual revenue growth to support, uh, those services. And with that, uh, woefully lagging was the growth rate in the actual human resources, the actual people, the actual bodies that are actually available to, uh, provide those public safety services. So effectively, what the public is feeling is a reduced level of service, uh, despite there being no reduction in bodies, uh, because of the, the cost of the services increased so dramatically, and the number of bodies haven't kept up with the overall demand for the service. And we identified the demand for the service by analyzing, uh, calls for service. Uh, we have identified a trend that suggests, uh, our, a police, uh, response is much more reactive than it was ten years ago, uh, where ten years ago, you could say fairly, we had a more proactive, uh, response to, to crime. Uh, we also measured, um, the amount of time it takes to respond to crime. We could clearly see that a lot of the residents that have complained about the response times, uh, growing, uh, that in fact is, is correct. And a lot of it has to do with the nature of the call volume, just having dramatically increased, and us not having, over the years, the sufficient amount of revenue to actually keep up with the demand for the service. So we saw that, um, on the patrol side. We certainly saw, and we've heard comments in the past, in, including from one of our council members, uh, with a great focus on traffic enforcement, and, you know, we've, uh, studied and even identified that we've seen a downward trend in the amount of traffic enforcement, in large part, we conclude because those deputies have largely been pulled to, to help out and assist with the patrol deputies. Um, it's a big city. The demand for the service, just on the police side alone, has, uh, has increased uh, much greater than we've been able to keep up with the service. We've found similarly, on the code enforcement side, uh, similarly natured trends where we just haven't been able to keep up with the demand. And we're hearing it more and more. We're getting unique projects, uh, such as fireworks enforcement, marijuana enforcement. Uh, food vendors is a big issue that this city has been, uh, grappling with. Uh, altogether, you know, we've identified and shared with you that, uh, we've been, uh, doing the best we can with the resources that we have, but the demands for the services just outpaced, uh, what we could provide. So with that, we tasked all of the departments to develop recommendations, recommendations for you to consider, uh, which include, um, what we call servin- service enhancements to each of those divisions of the public safety. And then from those recommendations, we actually attempted to quantify, you know, the, the amount of revenue that would be necessary to decide, yeah, how to provide those services. We looked first to see if we had the revenue, just the way our growth projections were working, uh, to be able to cover that. And the answer just fundamentally is, is no, we do not. Uh, in fact, um, one thing that's actually worked against us now is, um, the acceleration of the deficit spend that we're looking at, just based upon our known increases on the sheriff, uh, contract over the course of the next five years. Um, something's got to be done in terms of enhancing the revenue, uh, to be able to expand the public safety services. And at least what we proposed for you is a public safety plan that we believe will actually get you to being a more proactive community in terms. So with that, um, we at least modeled financially what was necessary, uh, to be able to get to that point. Um, and with that modeling that we did, of all of the different revenue structures or revenue, forms of revenue that the State of California avails to us in trying to, uh, employ, um, really the only one that provided, uh, sufficient enough revenue, not only to provide public safety, but also to address a lot of the community, uh, benefits that we've also been hearing of demand from our residents, which are things like public libraries, enhancements to parks and recreation, uh, amenities and, and programs, um, better streets, uh, better roads. Um, this was the only type of revenue source that we could identify that if the voters, in fact, were demanding these level of services, that's the only measure that actually would give you the revenues to actually provide what the, what the residents are demanding for. So with that, um, the recommendation out of that public safety plan was for the council to consider discussing, uh, what we're discussing here tonight is the placement of, of a transactions and use tax. Not the imposition, because we can't do that, but, but clearly just the discussion to actually put the measure on the November ballot. Um, and if the council votes to do that by a resolution, um, at a, at, say, the next council meeting, it could actually put that or place that item on a, on a ballot using a four-fifths vote of this council. Uh, so with that, um, the, 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 the discussion more so is focused around, does the council want to provide the public with the opportunity to weigh in on, uh, whether or not it wants to fund this, this type of public safety program and community, um, community enhancement?
Um, thank you, Mr. Met- Metzler. So to be very clear, if the council were to vote in favor of producing a resolution, um, um, or excuse me, voting in favor of a resolution to put a measure on the November ballot, the council in no way is imposing a tax on our residents. Is that correct?
That is correct. And in fact, um, we did include a sample of what the actual ordinance would look like. You'd effectively have to adopt, um, uh, pose an ordinance, get it into the registrar of voters, um, I'm sorry, adopt a resolution. Um, the, the measure, I understand that Andre would be in the form of the voters approving an ordinance.
But to answer the question directly, we are not the body that's actually approving.
Correct. And, and the general understanding would be that, um, the goal of this would be to directly allow our residents to weigh in on this. Is this something they want to do or not do? It'd be completely up to the residents.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. I have nothing further, Madam Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Jones? Uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gomez?
Well, I can, I also have a couple of questions. So my first question is, um, what is an ordinance in the legal municipal context?
Uh, that, that effectively is your local law.
Correct. That is, the ordinance becomes part of the municipal code. It is the law of the city.
So in other words, it's something enforceable by our, um, police officers that we contract with the County of San Bernardino? Is that correct?
Well, essentially, yes, all of the laws. However, there are administrative remedies that the city can actually impose as well. This would not rise to the level of a crime, which is typically what the sheriff reserves their time for.
I'll, I'll add to that. The, the, the code is something, despite the sheriff's, uh, ability to enforce the code, um, we also enforce the code quite heavily and rely on the code when it comes to code enforcement related matters. So when we're writing our site, uh, notices of violation or citations, it's actually speaking to, to you.
And how much did this council spend on the measure K that failed for the same purpose that is expected to pass today as a draft that's not being imposed by the council, but is being used through taxpayer dollars for all our constituents who are able to vote in the city to their voted up or down?
I don't know the answer to that.
I didn't get the question. I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
This is costing money, and it's not going to cost us anything as, as we approve this draft. And if it is, how much? Because I, measure K costs about so many thousands of dollars, so I wanted to see if we're doing the same balance again. Is it costing us money to put this measure on the ballot? How much?
Filing fee, uh, our role would be to pay likely for a filing fee for a registrar of voters, but th- those typically aren't large sums of money. If, if you're speaking more so to, uh, an advocacy side, um, thing that we are not permitted to do is advocate for or against. Our role in this particular case is to provide the opportunity to the voters by at least placing it on the ballot. So directly, it's going to be a filing fee, and unless Charlene is able to find it really quickly, I just, I can't characterize that as a big number.
Because I know the administrative services of our executive team are very costly, including the legal fees that would incorporate the argument on one side for our attorney to prepare that, and that's based on my prior knowledge. So that's why I was asking that. Thank you for the response. Why is the city considering a sales tax, um, to cover a five-year, thirty-four million dollar contract with the county despite the COVID-nineteen and the racist pandemic that's taking place since Floyd's death just a few days ago?
Well, Madam Mayor and members of the council, this is something that we've been considering well in advance of, um, all of the sadness that's been occurring over the course of the last week, and certainly well in advance of, uh, the pandemic. Um, so certainly, uh, this is not something being done in direct relation or in response to that. Uh, this has actually been prepared, um, uh, recognizing for many years the, the voice, uh, of our residents coming to this council and even writing this council, uh, about the need for all kinds of additional, uh, services, many of which this council has specifically spoke out individually on, whether it, it me, whether it speaks to traffic enforcement, um, increased police, uh, more libraries, uh, en- enhanced parks and rec, uh, services. So this is not something, uh, directly responding to what's going on today. It was actually intended to respond to, to, to the residents that were demanding these services. And then secondly, it was recognizing a need because we've been focused quite a bit, uh, on trying to, uh, make Victorville more fiscally, um, uh, a better fiscal status. And we've actually been successful in accomplishing that. We've been touting the fact that we've been able to, uh, beef up our reserves and, and, and put to good use through good fiscal management, the cash that we have. But we've also recognized as a part of that collective effort that the efforts that we've done in trying to make our community much more fiscally sound doesn't overcome the fundamental issue that the cost of the services are just dramatically outpacing the revenue. So regardless of how well we've been managing the city's fiscal resources over the past couple of years, that's not addressing the long-term demands that this community has been asking for that really are intended to try to reposition a Victorville into a better, safer community.
And then two years ago, there was a desire by the council to increase the sales tax by half a cent. But now it's 1%. Why is that?
Well, what I can tell you is, first, the measure that they were considering previously was a special tax, different than this type of tax. And what I can tell you is that in this particular case, we based the recommendation on an actual model of costs, what we believe are going to need to be to reposition our community to safer and cleaner. And then we actually used those costs to figure out what is the actual revenue needed to get there. And we actually projected those modelings out over seven or eight years to figure out, can we afford it? And so we based this more so on a financial modeling plan. Whereas when we did the half cent, I can't exactly tell you that we did that back then. I believe that measure was more so focused on much more simple metrics such as a number of firefighters and number of deputies in exchange for the measure. This was a much more involved fiscal analysis associated with a level of service.
And would you clarify what you meant with expand, expansion of our public services quote-unquote? And define what the city means when you use the term safety service?
Expand in the sense that it would be greater or bigger than what we currently have right now. And I'm sorry, what was?
Would you define what the city means with the term safety services?
Safety services would effectively be the four divisions that we see as a part of our public safety program, which is police, fire, code enforcement, and animal control.
And lastly, what does the, there's, I'm going to read this on page 56 and that I need clarification. So what is the use tax that cannot exceed 2% and additions must be levied in increments of 1/8% look like? And I'm thinking a schedule fee. So the local transaction and use tax cannot exceed 2% and additions must be levied in increments of 1/8%, which is 0.125%.
Oh, right. Yeah, that's taken directly from the revenue and tax code in California state law. And effectively, it's saying exactly that, that if we were to consider this type of a measure, we cannot put a measure on the ballot for an increase that is greater than 2%. And for comparison's sake, the fact that we are recommending a 1% level, it would fall within that threshold to where we're not exceeding the 2% that's allowed under state's revenue and taxation code. As to the incremental .125, what that's saying is that you can't, you can recommend or you can change, you can propose a transaction use tax only in even increments of that 1.25. What it's saying it differently, you can't say, I want to raise the sales tax or propose a raising of the sales tax that's only 10 cents. It's got to be in those .125, which the 1% would actually have a measure of a 1.125 increment.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Rita, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Reading about this ordinance of 1% in terms of a general transaction, it is a general tax by definition. And it's going to fund public safety, including maintenance and repair, infrastructure, maintenance of parks, and also recreation. In the analysis, it does not include public libraries, but it does include the homeless. This tax is going to be going to the general fund. So my question really is, once assuming that our citizens, our voters of Victorville will agree to this and approve the 1 cent, it goes into the general fund. Will there be other issues or other items that will be paid by this one tax? In other words, I want to make certain that residents understand that this is going to go to public safety, to the homeless, to the question of repairing and maintaining our services, but not to, let us say, increases in salaries. Because I know that's always a question that's always been asked. So my question is, is this going to be restricted to these particular items as listed in the analysis? Or is it going to be a general fund of money for everything that the city conducts?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, that's actually a very good question. And I think I would start out by pointing to page 58, section 3.06.030. That's the purpose defined in this draft ordinance. And why I say that's a good question is in part, that would be an example of where we as staff would invite your deliberation on this item. Because what Mayor Protem Ramirez is speaking to is stuff that you can actually include more specifically if you don't feel that what this is speaking to covers everything that you're looking for. So for example, I don't necessarily see homeless spoken to directly in this. And if that was a goal of this council, you can certainly write homeless in. Of course, we would probably elaborate a little bit as to what that means. But and I believe the point is the same with respect to public libraries, that we can specifically include that as well. I would advise you that because it's a general tax, you want to be somewhat general as opposed to specific, which if the program that you're trying to fund is too specific, too narrow, then this could actually instead be qualified as a special tax, which would have different threshold requirements and mean different things when it comes to actually getting voter approval. Saying it differently, if this measure moved forward as a general transactions and use tax, putting it before the voters in November would require a majority vote, a 50% plus one vote, to actually pass the general measure to where you do have the discretion to put it on as a specific, I'm sorry, as a special transaction and use tax measure. But that would require two-thirds of a vote. And I think the public safety plan that we drafted identified some of the history that we've had attempting to do specials with the threshold of two-thirds being extremely high, but yet still being able to garner well more than a majority is how our voters reacted in the last election, dealing with a similar matter. But getting back to Mayor Protem's question, and I think the point of that is that those are, if there's special things that you want included in here that are considered public essential services, you can certainly include them.
Keith, just a point of clarification. Homeless is addressed, right now it's only a draft ordinance, but it's subsection H.
Sorry, I just, yep.
And the library is also included in subsection E.
City manager, my concern is accountability. When people vote and approve this with 1 cent increase, I want them to be aware that we are going to be held accountable for what they are approving. In other words, we're doing what we're saying that we're going to do. And this is the reason why I ask that, because the money goes into the general fund. And my concern is accountability about the money that will be approved.
And I would agree with that. And that is something that certainly, the accountability can be held both at the management level and certainly at this council level, as this council has the ultimate authority to decide over the use and application of these revenues.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. When the city council decided to try the half-cent sales tax, it was facing a problem in funding public services. And that was a special tax. It was half-cent. And the option, my argument why I supported that was that we have a major interstate, two-state highways that come through the city of Victorville, high number of traffic and traffic accidents, fire and police. And we do not have any way to finance or fund that. We have no agency that pays us based upon all that traffic. And we have a large number of people who come into the community and use the streets, use the police and fire. The sales tax, quite frankly, is a way to share that, but it's also a way to take the burden off all the local people. If this was to be paid 100% by the property owners, citizens, voters of Victorville, I would be opposed to it. The same, I was opposed to the lot tax, which charged 157.50 for every lot and parcel in the city, which really hit the poor people in a greater proportion than it did people who had middle and upper income homes. And I was opposed to that for that reason. This tax actually, while we have a lot of expenditures to go to non-citizens that come through here, we want them to come through here, want to keep providing the services. But this provides a way to have supplemental income paid for the people who need the services without putting the burden on the local residents and taxpayers. It's more and more, they're being approved, more and more, the public recognizes that we have to have a better level of public services and police and fire. Boy, if there's any question of the need for police and fire, if you've been watching TV in the last two, three days, you understand that this can happen overnight when you don't plan for it. We need more police and fire, public service code enforcement. We really do. And this is a way, I think it's a fair way, to let the, put it on the ballot and let the public decide because they are really determining the level of service that they want. Because if they approve this, they will have sufficient funds to provide as it's provided here. And if they say no, then apparently they don't want a greater level of service. I'm confident that it will be approved. If you look at the special tax, which was restricted, it still received a 63, 62 point some percent. This needs 50%. So I'm, I feel very comfortable that the public will accept it and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm in agreement to what Jim just said because it is true. Who would imagine that we would be needing police and fire the way we have been in the last three, four days, which is madness, total madness that is so uncontrollable and costly to the citizens. But if we have this measure passed, it will give us the funds that we need, not just from our residents, but anyone that comes through and pays for whatever, gas, food, whatever. So I am 100% in favor.
Going to presume that that was the comment section? And if I can comment, I would like to use that time. If not, I would also like to share the same information and reserve my comment time if that is the case.
Let's wait for the comment. So at this time?
I do have speaker cards.
Motion?
I have speaker cards.
Oh, you have speaker cards.
Paul Marsh?
Evening, everybody. It sounds like, it sounds like what I was going to comment on has already been echoed by the, by the council. So I'll just read it real quick. I would hope that our city council will vote yes to allow a measure to be put on the ballot in 2020, in the 2020 election and let the decision to accept or decline the measure be made by the citizens of Victorville. As a taxpaying resident of Victorville, I support a measure that will ensure more resources that would benefit this city as a whole when it comes to public safety and health. This council has been presented with numerous pleas, requests, pleas requesting help surrounding the health and safety of our growing city. You may recall during a previous council meeting, an elderly woman came before this council asking for help. She had been burglarized twice, and on both occasions, the police response was slow. The elderly lady, as well as everyone else, understands that law enforcement conducts numerous duties throughout each day and that each issue is categorized accordingly. The public has, the public has come before this council on numerous occasions asking why our city cannot get more law enforcement on our growing streets. It comes down to affordability, which most of us understand. As elected officials, you wear many hats. I think we all can agree to that. It is the incumbent on each of you as stewards within our city to ensure that financially our city operates in a manner which promotes growth. Our city management team has already addressed this council as to the financial foothold the city has. We are okay for now, but at some point within the next few years, we will be operating in the red just to maintain what we have now. This does not address the additional resources that we're asking for. As a resident of Victorville, this measure is important to me because I know what it represents. Yet I understand how this might be misinterpreted by people who do not live in Victorville. To these people, it may simply look like a tax increase. But for us who live here, we stress the importance of this tax increase. The need will not diminish just because some people don't like it. Our city will continue to grow. The question is, will we have the resources available to accommodate that growth? In conclusion, I ask this council to support this measure and at least allow it to be put on the ballot so the citizens of Victorville can decide if this increase, this tax increase measure is important to them. Pretty much what you already echoed, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ruth Cordova?
Ruth Cordova, I come before this council to fully consider the recent 3,100 released prisoners from the federal prison announced by the Department of Justice. The 600 released prisoners pursuant to the zero bail, the ongoing effects of propositions 47, 57, and AB 109, and now the injurious civil unrest, while many released prisoners joined forces with the armed and dangerous Antifa terrorists, imposing a devastating and imminent threat to society. Persuade the rebelling civil unrest disorder and rise in the criminal population gave rise to an overwhelming increase calls for service, breaking record high. And while the law enforcement response time inherently decreases to protect the life and safety of the injured victims at large, are being violently attacked by terrorist groups. At night, upon the Victorville protests, deputies were violently attacked by a large group of terrorists. There was a setting of fires and numerous businesses burglarized, which warrants the immediate declaration of emergency in response to the imminent terrorist attacks by the mayor to protect the life and safety of the community. Here and now, there's an imminent need for the full expansion of police and fire personnel, the purchase of necessary logistics, vehicles, sophisticated technology, the expansion of necessary resources, and the future need to expand the emergency operating centers and staging areas for the injured victims. There's an imminent need to protect the life and safety of the community, pursuant to the endangered civil disorder arising from the mass acts of evil and fully strong-armed terrorists rioting, looting, setting blazes of fire, and causing mayhem throughout the region, resulting in the significant and imminent loss of life and property. While the high desert is the most vulnerable and dry and will pose a significant economic downfall within the entire Victor Valley region in record time. And while the people will have no avenue of escape during the blaze of fire, as there will be a destruction of loss of life and property and minimum to no hospitals to transport severely injured victims, much less airlifting them one at a time down the hill. Therefore, I ask that this city council consider the seriousness and nature of the rebellious and heinous acts of the terrorism and civil unrest, along with the ongoing homicides in this city. And that this council fully give the constitutional right and freedom to the people to decide whether or not they so choose to protect the life and safety of their own household. Let this council further be mindful of your legal duties and obligations to your oath to office and to the United States Constitution in protecting life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness, which include our first line of defense, police and fire, during the violent attacks by terrorists. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lenore Ferris?
Um, I'm here today because I, um, respect the, the police. I obey the law. And, uh, my grandson was murdered. I don't know who murdered him, but I never solved the, the case. Uh, maybe because it's a lot of, let, uh, we need more police. And the thing is that where, where the place my son was murdered, uh, my grandson was murdered, it was, I thought, uh, ri- writing on the place where he was killed. And that's MS thirteen. At that time, I didn't know what MS thirteen was. So now I, you know, I did research about that. So I realized that MS thirteen is a gang, they kill people, and they're from El Salvador, and they're here, and they never been deported. And it's everywhere. And we need more police. We need more funds for the police department to expand because it's a lot of murders, it's a lot of kids kidnapping, child trafficking, human trafficking, and drug trafficking. I obey the laws. I'm from another country, but I was, I came here with a, with a, a, I want to be free. I want to be, I obey the laws of the United States. I love this country. I follow everything to, I never committed a crime, you know? And this is not fair that we have to pay for those people murdering my, my grandchildren, even let those criminals out because of COVID nineteen, it's uncalled for. Make them clean around there. Sanitize their, their jails, but don't let them out. Because when they go out, they go in a rampage. Look at what happened now. All these people, uh, Antifa and all those people are criminals. Where all the, all those people, they worked so hard to build a business. All my, all lives matter. And, and I'm here begging you to not release those prisoners anywhere, here in Adelanto. Expand, support the police department. This country is beautiful. It's, it's the best country in the world. This, this country leads the world. We, I'm, I'm, I'm from Colombia, and, and Colombia, they adore the United States. And, and everybody wants to come here, but they have to come here legally. So obey the laws. It would be a paradise. The, the whole world would be a paradise if people obeyed the laws instead of taking advantage of anybody.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
And thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Christina Perez?
Thank you, everyone. I'm here, um, I was invited to come and speak. Um, basically, everything has been addressed by the, or the city manager, but basically incre- here, I'm here to support the increase of, uh, police and, um, and support services. Um, in this, uh, based on the city data, uh, the, um, crime rate is eighty-five percent higher than eighty, than the rest of the US cities. And, um, we need support. So I think that that's really high. And, um, so that's all I want to say. I just wanted to comment on that for now. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maggie Martin?
I don't think I need to stand before this council one more time and tell you, as I have in the past, how much we need more law enforcement. Been up here twenty-two years. I remember I could get a response time in twenty minutes. I've literally had dispatch tell me, and I'm reiterating for the people that don't know my, my, my spiel, that I say, will it be like three? No, the calls are backed up, priority calls. You're probably like an eleven tonight. I'm like, don't call me at eleven o'clock. I'm going to make me better sleep. I'll call you at five AM tomorrow morning. They say, cool. But it's, it's the truth. We, we need the services. We need them. And, and I'm frustrated by certain members of the council, and they know who they are, that think, it's like a paycheck, you know? None of us here are paid the same salary for the same job that we were five years ago, ten years ago. Hopefully, we get incremental changes. Well, the city's population has grown. It's, it's ignorance, it's ignorance for council members, much less any thinking, right-thinking person, that you can perform the same level of service with the same amount of money. And to that, and to one particular council member, I would say, you, you state that you're, that you're pro-law enforcement, but it's not free. I'm telling you, it's not free. You're not going to have the same level of service unless that money is in that pot. That's enough from me.
Thank you. Valentina Godina?
Good afternoon, city council. It is true that we need, uh, an increase in our budget, but the way I see it and from what I hear, um, racial incitement and looting and causing division is not just by people of different colors. They are also caused by people who bring up false information of looting and rioting and destruction that is not true, that it did not happen in Victorville. That some happened, yes, but the way that it was described is not true, and that is a lie, and that is inciting, uh, more division. What did happen is, uh, Staples store did get some windows broken, and one fire trashcan did get set on fire. That did happen. But our police department was there, and they professionally took care of it and arrested quite a few people that were not part of a peaceful protest. So when you have people coming here inciting and saying false things, they are feeding the situation that is already happening. Now, the one percent that we need, the way it is, uh, written, it sounds deceptive and suspicious. You leave the library and public facilities at the end, but you don't say how much is going to go to them. Police and fire are extremely important, there's no doubt. But to give them over half of our budget is a little concerning. Now, when the city took over the, the library, they said it was because they knew how to run it better than the county. They took over the library, they took over the budget. Now we see cities around us who have their libraries still under the county, who are modern and state-of-the-art, and our library is an embarrassment. We have not put a nickel into it as compared to how much we put into our fire and our police department. And they are all important, and they are the basis of our city. So when you put this out for the taxpayers, they're going to be looking and questioning this. Now, we need accountability from our police department as well as their help. If we, uh, uh, equip them with body cameras, they can be, they can safely, uh, do their job because everything will be recorded and nothing will be doubted as to how professionally they handled a situation and how it, it escalated.
Your time is up.
And that out of their hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Jesse Lawrence?
Sorry. I can't sit here and listen to this any longer. I've been out there on the frontlines protesting with my black brothers and sisters. I've been on the frontlines with them while police are shooting at us, and we're not doing anything. We have our hands up, we have our signs up, we are letting them know we're just here to try to make change, and they are still throwing things at us, still throwing bombs at us, still shooting rubber bullets at us that are taking out people's eyes. You're dealing with a, with a community that prides themselves on being Trump-loving and hating black people. You're dealing with da- a dangerous narrative. If you put out there that the riots that are hap- he had a point when he said that the riots that are happening, the, what you're seeing on the media, and when you said that you're seeing stuff all over the media, you should know better than to trust the media because they're only putting things out there that are just trying to feed a rhetoric that is hateful to black people and is anti-black. So putting this out there and having taxpayers try to fund more cops, as of, what was it, September twenty nineteen, you yourself, uh, had made a statement talking about how you're disgusted by all of the things that are going on, all of the crimes, but none of those crimes had to do with police brutality. None of those crimes had to do with racism. Those were just crimes that were happening in our community. So the fact that you still haven't made a comment about the fact that there are still racist murders happening, it disgusts multiple people. And the fact that I, as a white person, has to come here and tell you that? You should be listening to the people that are being killed. All of you should be doing that. As of September twenty nineteen, I think it said that sixty-three percent of the funds went to public safety. If more than fifty percent is already going to it, how can, how can literally not even five percent go to just creating posters outside of these stores that you're so adamant about protecting? If you just put one sign outside of a Target that you're so adamant about protecting that said Black Lives Matter, they would probably walk up to that Target and turn right around because they know that those people support their life. You're more worried about hiring people that are killing people than you're worried about supporting people that are dying. Simple as that. And I will be here every single meeting, and, i- if I have to, because this is disgusting me, the way that people are talking. What's happening in the high desert is nothing compared to what's happening down there. So the fact that we're putting all of these funds, I'm being honest, it's for no reason. These people are scared that their, that their favorite Target's going to get broken into? My best friend is scared that his life is in danger every time he walks out of his fucking house. That is not okay. Fuck your Target. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, you don't use that kind of language.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I, I'll make you stop if you continue that.
His time is up.
Yeah, my time is up anyway. Thank you.
Romero Rodriguez?
Hello, council people, council members, and the seventeen people watching us on YouTube and the rest on Facebook. Um, I'm actually addressing the people here, actually. Um, I just came to talk about the tax increase for sales tax. Our businesses are boarded up. They're gone, they're leaving, some are not coming back. And we're going to raise their taxes? Maybe we should restructure what we have already, some furloughs, payment reductions, some layoffs, maybe not hiring fifty-four people. What I noticed now, they did a little backend thing. I, I knew, I know we were supposed to talk about the library and fund them and all these other programs, but now they stick it in here. If we don't, if they don't pass it, then the library's out the door again. So you're kind of putting something right th- threatening the, the liability and the life of the library if you don't vote for this. It's one percent. Where's it's going? Uh, two weeks ago, in the meeting, it says we, we're not going to go broke till twenty twenty-six. Now they're saying we're broke already, and we need money to come up with. Um, it's just, they change the, the variable and the narrative all the time. So what are we going to believe? There's a lot of misappropriation of funds. We saw that with the catering for the, for the city, twenty-six thousand dollars. First, it was going to ta- be taken out of the general fund. Nope, then we could use the FEMA funds. And then they said, oh, no, it's taxpayer money. But the taxpayer money was not to pay twenty-six thousand dollars worth of catering services and steaks and, and, uh, and lobster for the people. They were to help the, the needy. So what happens when FEMA comes looking after misappropriation of funds? Who's going to pay those fines? We just paid twenty million dollars, oh, almost nineteen point six million dollars in fines. That could have been very resourceful right now. Now, I know it's taboo to talk about the police. It's taboo. Oh, we need more police, we need more police, we know, we know. I know that their union is so strong, that they'll defend them teeth and core, they're stronger than Hafa and, and, and the Teamsters. And there's good policemen out there. But sometimes being too powerful gives them a, a false sense of what they're actually trying to achieve. And I might, I'm not going to cause any waves or nothing, but all this started as a one person. And so that's very important, we understand what's going on right now. And we have to see, this is a city, this is a family. But this gentleman is talking about being shot and everything, that's not happening up here. We have very good people, we have good policemen. They changed the narrative a little bit about the response times. They categorized it in four numbers, from two to four, uh, one hour to two hours, but then they left out the emergency and the one, when you see that police car going at a hundred miles an hour down a residential area. Takes twenty, thirty seconds to get from end to end.
Your time is up.
So don't believe everything that they tell you. So thank you. So we'll wait for this and the vote for the election. Thank you.
I just want to confirm, Harvey, do you want to speak on this item, or is there a different item you wanted to speak on? Oh, you're Harvey? Harvey, you're next.
Hello to everyone. Um, I do want to speak on the matter of, um, our police force, everything that's going on. I am one that is for our police officers, um, but I do call for accountability for our police officers. And more so, I'm here to, to, to stand for the community of Victorville and addressing our board that in times like this, we need you guys, all of you guys. And when I say that, I mean in the form of tangibility. Uh, I do want to commend our council member, councilwoman, Blanca Gomez. I respect her and I commend her for being in our community and being tangible. The reason why I'm here today is because I see her. If I go on my social medias, I see her protesting with the people. I see her posting, informing, educating the people that may be ignorant to the fact that even a council meeting is going on. Yes, we do thank you for allowing it to be free and if we use our own brains, but some people are so caught up emotional, caught up in so much distress, that it takes someone like councilmember Blanca Gomez to remind us what's important and how to address it. Um, and just like our brother said- And just like our brother said, if we could just see that certain businesses, certain people support us, yes, that will make a change, but what's more change is you guys being present more so in the community. And if you are, I thank you. But to let you know that the individual that I see the most is our councilwoman Blanca Gomez means so much and it only takes us to come together. This is where change takes place. This is where our voice, the community voice that is an outcry, is heard and could be a change. There needs to be accountability on all ends, but if we don't want any riot, rioting, which I'm against, as angry as I am as a black man, as a citizen of Victorville, yes, I'm angry, but I don't agree with the rioting and looting. There is a way to do it and it should be done in peace because that's where power is, but it, there needs to be a unity. There shouldn't be a separation of lower class, middle class, and upper class. There's only one class and that's mankind. And that's what we need to stand together on and come together and, and, and not bicker on the smaller things. But actually educate one another and stand together in unity. So I just wanna put that on the hearts of our councilmember, our team. I, I do consider us as a team. I'm a, uh, I'm a native of Adelanto, California. I moved out here in ninety-five. I'm a resident in Victorville and I refuse to leave this city. I refuse to leave this city because of everything that goes on. I stand for change and I will stay here in the high desert in Apple Valley, Hesperia, Adelanto, Victorville and continuously educate and inform our citizens of what we need to do to bring change here. And if it takes us to vote people out, we'll do that. And if it takes us to be here and stand, we will do that. But I do appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Terry? Levante?
I've never done this before. Thank you for your time. Um, the only thing I have to really like ask, and I want you guys to take this home with you before I'm here at the next meeting, is, when you guys are doing the math on what you need to add to the police force to get these response times down, are you guys also thinking about implementing standards and practices for these new officers that you're planning on hiring? So that they can act in accordance? Because I heard somebody say that there are only upstanding police officers in this region and I've had a gun pointed at my face like three times. And that's not within the last year, that's in the past like three years and I'm only twenty-two. So, this is a problem. I'm like shaking because it's, it's difficult to express to you guys because it may not affect you guys. You don't take this home with you, but I do. I feel this. Every single time it happens to somebody else, we can't act like it's not happening because it is. That man, we only know about it because it was on camera him dying. What about the times that this happened to me and the officer told me to shut my fucking mouth? What about those times and I was too scared to ask for a badge number? Does that not matter to anybody here? Do you not see me? Because you wouldn't have seen me if I wasn't standing here. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I have two more that I have to read into the, into comment. Dear Mayor and Victorville City Councilmembers, I would like to express my support for a ballot proposal for one percent transaction use tax increase to address public safety. However, in consideration of the crime statistics in the city of Victorville, a tax measure that has been guaran- that has guaranteed stipulated funds for crime prevention and transpare- transparency of the expenditure plan could potentially solicit the most support from voters. I'm concerned about this current initiative measure because Measure K failed to receive the required voter approval. Obstacles cited in the passing of Measure K included promises of funding to bolster specific programs, yet set amounts were not guaranteed. Furthermore, without guaranteed stipulations, voters expressed concerns that funds would not be used for their intended purpose. While most everyone is concerned about higher taxes, this currently suggested tax amounts to pennies on the dollar and should not place an undue burden on anyone. It is important to recognize that the, under this proposal, everyone who shops here will contribute to public safety so that the burden does not fall solely on Victorville residents. I would rather pay a few extra cents on local purchases than to pay the price of not having the public safety we need in Victorville. How much is our safety worth to us? As for the thirty additional officers this proposal would add, there is limited scientific evidence to support that more officers equate to less crime. Supplementing more boots on the ground with guaranteed funds for crime prevention strategies will make strides in reducing crime. It will allow for the creation of meaningful relationships with law enforcement and will lessen the potential for inequitable relationships in communities of color. I would like to leave you with this question. In the event that the proposed ballot measure does not pass, what are the city's plan to address crime as we remember the failure of Measure K? This is a question on the minds of many residents who fear for their safety on an all-too regular basis. Thank you for your consideration of these matters. Sincerely, Linda Titus.
Dear City Councilmembers, like almost everyone in Victorville, I'm concerned about crime and public safety and happy to see how hard the city is working to address these issues. Over the last six months, Victorville residents have seen an increase in homicides, assaults, burglaries, and robberies, as well as many other crimes. This is well documented on the crimemapping.com website. These concerns are echoed by many people who fear for their safety both at home and in public. It has come to the point that it is not safe to go to the gas station, a neighborhood convenience store, a sit-down restaurant, or even Walmart without being worried of becoming a victim of crime. Residents must be on constant alert in their homes with security systems to protect their mail, cars, package deliveries, and to prevent unauthorized entry into their homes, putting them and their families at risk. For those who cannot afford a security system, it is even a bigger challenge to monitor and protect themselves and their personal property. In reference to the proposed transaction use tax discussed in the Public Safety Report, while I appreciate the effort to add thirty additional police officers, this method is taking a reactive approach to crime rather than a proactive one through means of crime prevention. For a ballot measure of a one percent tax increase to be successfully passed, Victorville residents will want to see what our city plans to do to address crime through prevention. While crime prevention is briefly discussed in this report, Section F of purposes in Exhibit A, there is no suggested proportion of these purposes. I would like to propose that the councilmembers consider modifying the terminology of the proposed ballot measure to address crime prevention in more detail or to include a local advisory vote in tandem with the general tax measure to gauge the opinion of the majority of voters on the proportions designated to each purpose outlined in Exhibit A of the Public Safety Report. I would also like to suggest that a citizen advisory committee to be put in place should this ballot measure pass. I request a consideration out of concern for the quality of life for all Victorville residents. Our current state of crime in Victorville is negatively impacting our safety at home and in public, and it's time to be proactive with prevention efforts. Sincerely, Mike Graborn. Those are all the comments I have.
No other speaker cards either? Okay, thank you. Uh, so at this time, I do need a motion and a second on Item Six.
Uh, yes, uh, Madam Mayor, I move the recommendation set out on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Absolutely. Don't know if the mayor would like to take it at a certain order.
Uh, no.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, listen, in the May nineteenth Public Safety Report, we learned the state of public safety in Victorville. It was, in fact, a sobering report. We are behind the curve and, um, we not only must catch up, but also we must anticipate future demand and become very proactive in offering our residents a very rigorous and robust public safety plan that falls under the, the broad categories of law enforcement, fire, code enforcement, and animal control. The ordinance, uh, draft ordinance that we have before us attends to the concerns expressed by the people repeatedly and by this council repeatedly. I'll never forget the woman who came up and spoke, I believe it was last year, and she had been burglarized several times. An elderly woman, yet very spry in her heart. And she fought back tears as she recounted how she didn't care about anything that was stolen in her home except that very precious sewing box of her mother's. And we see the things in our community, whether it's crime or, um, issues with, um, not being able to tend to things that ti- uh, typically fall under code enforcement. It impacts our daily lives. It impacts how we feel about our community. It, uh, impacts how safe we feel and I certainly don't believe that we in any way should be living in the wild, wild west, but increasingly, that's how people are feeling in our community. I've, um, been very involved with the community and, um, there's, uh, social media is ablaze with concerns about specifically, not, you know, public safety issues such as loud music blaring to the point that people can't sleep, um, and they need to get up in the morning and work. Off-roading, uh, in prohibited locations, even in, in, uh, taxpayer-funded, maintained areas. I've had several gentlemen tell me that they won't walk at night anymore because they're afraid. I've spoken with a teacher a few years ago who signed up herself and her family for a gym because they were afraid to take healthy walks in their own neighborhood. People are increasingly concerned about pop-up vendors who don't have licenses and don't pay the types of fees that other, um, businesses do. And illegal dumping. So, uh, recently, I've had the good pleasure of speaking with quite a number of residents. Um, we had one resident that, uh, started a post and the, the comments were astonishing. And you could hear almost the tears in some of those posts. People watching, and the fireworks, people watching their animals suffer. Their friends with PTSD suffer. Their family members with PTSD suffer as a result of illegal fireworks. These are the things that, and, and weeds and, you know, weed abatement and all these kind of issues. These are the things that affect us and we want, we all want our city to be a better place. We all want to improve our quality of life. And listen, we have a lot of work to do. I believe, um, you know, I've personally experienced the effects of crime. My daughter witnessed a violent crime that I interrupted. She wasn't ten years old and was diagnosed with PTSD as a result of having witnessed that crime. I've interrupted a number of other violent crimes because I'm not willing to stand by and watch my neighbors suffer and be hurt. It is wrong to think that any group of people by virtue of their kindergarten scrawl can write on a wall and presume that that's the same thing as a trust deed or a lease or rental agreement. It is not. Look, we have a draft safety plan before us. If we, if we get funding, we can drill down on that. We can carve out what that really needs to look like and the people will be able to weigh in on that as well. That might be the opportunity that we, we look at, uh, a, a community oversight board with policing. These, this might be one of those things that help to build positive relationships so that our officers can understand how the people are really feeling. I think, um, as for me, I think that that could potentially go a long way. I'm all for this. I want the people to have a voice on this. They are screaming, they've been crying for years. I think it's time that this council gives our citizens the right to have a say in what their community looks like. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I, I didn't wanna share this, but however, it merits repetition. Niels Benson, our neighboring Hesperia, city manager, who sits in the city of Hesperia, as I said, in the early nineties, was investigated and it was confirmed that he was the Number One Shark, which is a gang of police that uses power to subjugate and cause abuse. And the Number Two Shark is the sitting assistant manager in that same city, which is in our general vicinity. Both were police officers, sheriff. To enter the Shark Gang, it was required that one be the black man. As I walked the streets periodically, many people of color continue to feel the early nineties injuries being relived today. I mention this because our city of Victorville hired this Number One Shark in the police department and nineteen others were aggregated back in the nineties. And this is a measure that was funded. And this is a measure that we're funding today still again without addressing the behaviors that occurred in the nineties with the riots in LA, with Rodney King, and now with George Floyd, who is dead. COVID-19 abuse of power under uniform. We're facing in our nations that we, as we witness and participate in protests due to injustice that is being witnessed by a particular police department that is not located, fortunately, in California. Despite these police officers and sheriffs being outside of our city, it is clear that there is a crisis called racism that continues to linger and be abused. And tonight, we need to start looking for other alternatives of community services for those public safety concerns and those performances. The COVID-19 has not allowed revenue sources to increase taxation and I'm in opposition with a two-point-seven deficit in the general fund, knowing that forty-nine percent of it is already taken as a discretionary measure by this council to offer for our police force, which constitutes sixty-two percent when we incorporate, uh, our fire. This draft will definitely cost us money. How many times do we have to cajole or put the people on the voting no position before we get a yes? Would it be the third time and then the voting passes and then we tax and then we continue? A general tax does not necessarily mean that we're going to earmark those fundings for what we have stated today guaranteed because we can always vacillate between what we want. And if there is accountability and we don't have enough of you continuously telling us how this needs to be done, don't guarantee that it's going to be done for what it's going to be voted for. Remember, that homicide, that asphyxiation was witnessed in a viral video and the protests continue today and they will continue until we make a movement and unite. And you're right. We need to sit people up here who are actually conscious of what's happening out there in the streets. Please come, be a part of this. It is so essential. Thank you.
Rita, did you have something? Uh, Rita, are you there?
Yes.
Did you have some comments? Did you have?
Oh, it was, it was very interesting, what everybody said. It was very interesting.
Did you have something to, uh, a comment?
No, nothing to say.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, then I guess, uh, I'll speak. Um, forgive me if I get emotional, but I do have reason, uh, to say that, um, I do respect our police department. If it wasn't for them, where would we be? If you haven't lost a loved one like I have, you don't know the pain that comes with that. I'll even go as far as to tell you how my granddaughter was murdered just so you can understand why we need this measure to pass, why we need to have more policemen in our area. My son's only child was stabbed fifty-some times. They shot her. They left her body in the desert. They set fire to her body. If you don't think that's pain that never goes away, that's why I have so much respect for our police department because they're here to protect us so those things don't happen. People don't understand. They go out there and they commit a crime and some, something happens to them. They blame the police department. Everything that happens always gets... They blame the police department. Everything that happens always gets. The police department gets the blame. But yet what are you doing out there in the middle of the night? Destroying property, hurting other people, innocent people. So I am one hundred percent in favor of this measure, so I do hope that our citizens will realize that we need. To bring this measure to pass. So. That's my sermon for the day.
I do have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Nay.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Thank you, everyone. Um now we move on to item seven. Ratification of the acceptance of Federal Aviation Administration Grant Agreement. Uh Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
That the Board of Directors ratify the acceptance of grant agreement number three dash zero six dash zero three five nine dash zero two seven. Dash twenty twenty, grant twenty-seven between the United States of America. Acting through the Federal Aviation Administration and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority in the amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. In support of airport operations and adopt resolution number SCLAA. Twenty dash zero zero four, increasing budget grant revenues by a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars and increasing budgeted grant expenditures. By a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Thank you. Um council members, do you have any questions? Uh I'll start with uh Councilmember Cox.
Uh no questions, thank you.
None, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, a brief clarification. So would you be able to contextualize how Fund four fifty with the ratification grant agreement? What it means within the funding or the account of the city?
Fund four fifty?
Yes.
Have to restate your question, I'm sorry. Fund four fifty's airport operations uh.
Yeah, so what I'm trying to understand in the bigger picture of looking at our um. Two hundred and twenty-four million and our deficit of four point seven million, how it plays into and if not, that's the case, grant money is not necessarily free. So I want to see how it measures up with the presentation that we had on Thursday.
Oh, sorry, gotcha. Um so Fund four fifteen is one of those eighty-one funds that we identify. Um in the aggregate of of the total budget and if the budget is in the aggregate of two hundred and fifty million dollar budget. This Fund four fifty is likely to represent eight or nine million. Don't quote me because I don't have my uh budget book in front of me. But this is a component of the larger aggregate citywide uh budget, which includes not only um. General fund, but it also includes your special funds and your enterprise funds all altogether.
Yeah, and that's that my question was, I was going to say general fund, but I wasn't sure if it was just kosher and it only encapsulated Fund four fifty. Which is just one for the SCLA airport. Uh so when you say that it incorporated, I think there was three other funding sources. I know that this council has discretionary um funding exercises towards that. How I I want you to contextualize it with our vote today, any potential impacts if there are any and if not. How our voting of passing this measure or this grant approval ratification would do service to the airport specifically.
So um Fund four fifty, Fund four five zero is not a part of the general fund. It's actually considered one of our enterprise funds, uh one of our many enterprise funds. So uh your discretion is is always as the Board of Directors for the Airport Authority in approving. Uh first from a policy perspective, the actual budget, this item is dealing with. Uh unexpected revenues, revenues that were offered to us uh through the CARES Act. And and effectively we took the liberty to accept that grant that that effectively became. Entitled money from the federal government in response to the covid um uh effects. So uh this item particularly is just a ratification of that revenue uh that was unexpected. There's no match requirement associated with this grant. So this is a hundred percent um um. Grant revenue to the airport for which the airport can use to help offset or mitigate the effects associated with the covid pandemic.
So that brings my last question. Uh can you provide maybe two or three examples of how the airport was specifically affected by covid? And disregard the administration because I know that we weren't, we didn't furlough any of that. So I'm thinking covid more similar to a a natural disaster and it affects literally the infrastructure of what we have over there.
Uh sure, and and I think the best way to characterize it is just describing some of the the ways in which the airport operates and generates revenues. So one of the biggest uh line items on the revenue side of the airport's budget is from lease revenues. And so an impact could be uh a less see occupying one of our facilities that for example can't pay its rent. Uh because they're not able to uh actually operate. They've been forced shut down. Uh and of course, because businesses are not operating, um they're not able to generate revenue on their own to pay for their rent. So that would be um uh an example uh of how the airport uh could get impacted. Um other forms of revenue include the consumption of fuel. We certainly generate revenues associated with the. A sale of fuel to aircraft. Uh fuel sales are likely fairly low right now because there's. Uh lesser flying activity. That would be another example of how the airport uh isn't impacted. And airports particularly across the country were identified and earmarked funds to offset. Um these types of losses because airports uh were considered a part of the critical infrastructure system. That despite uh the pandemic and the loss of revenues needed to be maintained. Uh so with that, that's that's the the genesis of these funds and what they're intended to help abused for or to offset.
What was the last phrase you said? Abused for? Okay.
Used.
Used for and?
For and offset.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that clarification, helped you understand this item. No further questions.
Rita, do you have any questions on item seven?
No, I don't. No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions either. Do we have any speaker cards?
Have any speaker cards?
So at this time, I do need a motion and a second for item seven.
Uh Councilmember Gomez, go ahead and offer that motion as recommended by staff.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? Take a roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Nay.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item eight, standard lease agreement for building seven thirty-nine. Uh Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors ratify a standard lease agreement for building seven thirty-nine. By and between the SCLAA and COMAV Technical Services.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Of staff, um Mr. Cox?
I don't have any questions, thank you. It's a good staff write-up and it explains the uh situation.
None, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Gomez?
Yes, if I'm correct, I believe this one was speaking to COMAV. You can correct me if I'm wrong, COMAV coming in um and needing an immediate lease for expansion due to more aircraft. Is that the case?
Uh yes, that's in fact what the staff report summarizes.
Yeah, thank you. So my question um for this one was um if there is any administrative provisions. That uh you yourself or your executive team or any of the directors or supervisors used in order to be able to um. Bring this forth without bringing it first to the city council and that underlies the presumption that perhaps. Um there's many cases that we have brought this, but it was just delineated in my mind's eye. So I'm trying to acknowledge if there's indeed a process within the provisions and we've seen in the past. Where we bring something like this first uh behind the scenes and then the city council gets the forefront and then we approve it. Do you understand my question? I can try to restate it.
Makes, yeah, if you wish, it does make sense.
Yes, so it makes total sense to what I'm saying. Um there's been multiple occasions where we grant the CEO yourself. A lot of administrative power and provision and you act within the realm, I believe, when it's questioned and you can cite the provision. Um just to ensure that the accountability and the transparency exists. I want to make sure that within this provision that hopefully you're gonna bring up. Um we were able to do what you needed to do as a city manager within the department. And then it's okay to bring it thereafter, after the fact, to counsel to be like, okay, that's good. Thank you for doing that. I'm looking this at more as like an emergency type of situation, even though it's not an emergency type.
Um Madam Mayor, members of the council, um if if I was using my own authority, which I do have certain authorities provided under the municipal code. Uh to exercise contracts independent of the council, I would have done that. In this particular case, this item is being brought to this council. For its consideration. Um it's not one that's within my authority likely because of the value associated with it. And that's why this council is being asked for its consideration. I think if anything to try to 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 reason with the. Questions from Councilmember Gomez, um if 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 it were the case, similar to the previous item where. Uh we're ratifying or using the word ratification, which is what we did in the item, you'd see that in this particular staff report, but that's not the case. This item is being brought uh for your consideration and approved.
Think I appreciate that clarification and my question was in no means to um depower or take any authority that you have. Is just for clarification and for the community to understand that we definitely are here to provide accountability in in any kind of manner that. I perceived it to be. Thank you. No further questions.
Rita, do you have anything?
No.
Thank you. I don't have anything either. So at this time, I need a, uh I'm sorry, do we have speaker cards? So at this time, I do need a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, I approve uh I move staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? Roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now we move on to item number nine. Application to the local early action planning grant program. Madam Clerk, please uh read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt resolution number twenty dash zero two nine, authorizing the city manager or city managers designate to. Apply for the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Local early action planning grant program in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for projects that assist in the preparation and adoption of planning documents. And process improvements that accelerate housing production and facilitate compliance to implement the sixth cycle of the regional housing needs assessment. And if approved by HCD, executive the standard, execute the standard agreement and any other documents necessary to. Secure the LEAP grant.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? I'll start with Ms. Jones this time.
Uh no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Gomez?
Yes, so I'm focusing on page one sixty-seven, one question and um I want to state that I'm a bit befuddled. Uh with the phraseology, there comes with a lot of assumptions in my interpretation of it. So would you please with your expertise ex- explain with that context this following sentence that says, if awarded. The grant would provide five hundred thousand dollars in unbudgeted revenue. Thank you.
Uh the response to that question is if awarded by the state. This is a resolution actually authorizing us to apply for a grant. To be considered at the discretion of the California Department of Housing and Community Development. So if awarded by the state of California, perhaps uh that being inserted would make it more clear. The grant would then provide five hundred thousand dollars, which is not currently in the draft budget because we can't rely on it as revenue.
Thank you. Um since we are going to, I believe today is when we're gonna be approving the budget. I'm I'm just a little bit confused. We had three meetings in a row each week and if it's not the case, you can correct me um in a bit. So I know we we looked at and and we have huge numbers, two hundred twenty-four million and then um we have. Uh not withdrawals, but expenses of two hundred twenty-nine million and we're a deficit four point seven. And part of that unencumbered balance being two point seven for the general fund. So now looking at some of these revenues, which you know anytime we get revenues, I I think we get happy because now we have. I believe enough cash flow, but I I would like for you to assist me. In terms of where this revenue, if potentially hypothetically we were to receive it, where would this revenue look? And I know five hundred thousand, it's it probably is a dime in the bucket or a cent in the bucket. But I'm trying to understand where this revenue would be considered since we have so many different accounts.
Um the answer would be in a grant fund. We have a number of grant funds uh throughout our eighty-one chart of accounts. Um that likely is considered one of our fiduciary. Uh but Scott, uh we've got a bunch of them. Can you uh identify potentially which fund? If we receive this grant, you would likely deposit that money into?
It's my understanding that the uh finance department would create a new fund uh specifically for this grant to track. Uh the expenditure of the funds. Um what we're envisioning to use the funds for is to uh partially offset uh. Planning staff wages, which are currently funded through the general plan. Uh sorry, not through the general plan, through the general fund. Uh so that would that would be a benefit uh financially to the city since we're required to uh comply with state housing. Uh laws. Um this is just a mechanism from the state to help uh cities, all cities throughout the state. To comply with uh their their next cycle of uh RENA and have an updated housing element. So we plan to use it for staff uh funding, um also to hire a technical consultant that specializes in uh housing laws. To make sure that we uh put together a housing element that's fully compliant with state requirements.
So that brought brings in another question. Hopefully I have a couple more maybe seconds. So do could you break down the percentages or the categories of how this money would be? Um you said administrative staff offset and then a consultant fee. So in my mind's eye, there's only two categories. Administrative staff pay salary, one, and the second one would be that consulting firm that you would be hiring that would come through us. Are there any more? Can you give me a bit more detail? And is it related to SB two?
It is similar to SB two, but it is a separate grant. Um they're both geared towards accelerating housing production. Um but as far as other line items that we would bill to this grant, mainly like uh to advertise for a public hearing. Um to send mailing labels, uh radius letters out to property owners to come and participate in the planning process. That would be some of the other expenditures that we could use this funds for.
Okay, and lastly, is has there been a developmental organizational plan flow chart that really delineates that within the department? That you guys as staff members use that as a guide or is that just this so much working within the department that that's just technically. What you would do with something with marketing to help aid with how you're gonna divvy up the money and how it's gonna be used?
Um well, each grant's different, so um we'll we'll craft this one to to fit the requirements of the state.
Let me rephrase my question. I I guess as a staff member, I was just wanting to see what procedures do staff members usually. Do or comply with. So if someone from the general public did a CPRA, which is a California Public Records Request. We can show, yes, look, indeed, this is how we're using the money and this is our flow chart. This is generally what we do. That that's why I was contextualizing it. If you have like a flow chart or some type of thing where you the process can be delineated. For the public if they wanted to see something of that level.
Yes, that would be listed in the application. Um so they would they would have a whole uh work plan put together. To to show how we plan to use the funds and this is the this is a portion of it to get a city council resolution.
Thank you. I am so grateful to you for giving me that explanation. I don't have to do a CPRA or try to ask or. Thank you. I am so grateful to you for giving me that explanation. I don't have to do a CPRA or try to ask or dig in. This, this perfect, beautiful, I trust what you've just told me. Thank you so much. No further questions.
Thank you.
Doug, do you have any questions?
No.
I have none.
You have no speaker cards.
No, no speaker cards. But we need a motion and a second for item number nine.
Councilmember Gomez would, um, go ahead and invite that motion. I'll get, go ahead and take that motion as rendered by recommend- the recommendation the staff has just provided, um, through the discussion and, um, basically what's in the documents. If I need a reframe, just let me know. Rephrase it, please. So, um, I, Councilmember Gomez, um, go ahead and, uh, make that motion as recommended by staff. Thank you. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? Roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now we move on to item num- number ten. Status update of the Baldi Mesa Water District Parity Certificates of Participation Series Number Two S- Two Zero Zero Six Bond. Um, Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors allow for an open dialogue to discuss the outstanding debt service of the Victorville Water Improvement District Number Two, formerly known as the Baldi Mesa Water District.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Gomez, you can present this since you requested it.
Y- yes, thank you, and that just clarifies my question. I know this was an agenda item, but I wasn't sure if the discussion was going to make sure that we bridge that gap between what is owed and what we have now, so we equalize the payments. I know there was, I think, fifteen dollars or thirteen dollars per parcel. I m- I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But this was brought up because, um, I felt that there was a general consensus that we should bring both WID one and WID two if there's any gaps between what is taking place with the money, um, and make sure that we have the opportunity for the residents to go ahead and basically equalize it. That's the language that I'm using to be able to present this item with, um, the, uh, consent of my council, which I'm very greatly and very appreciative of this item that has been brought forth. Please, um, the discussion that I, I believe should ensue is to not only protect, um, our constituents in terms of WID one and WID two, but to show them that we're providing an equanimity when it comes to those payments. So I guess what I can do is, I've learned very well from Councilmember Jones, is ask, um, our city manager if he can, um, briefly let us know this topic, since I know we have a lot of new faces in here, and if they happen to be within the Baldi Mesa WID one or WID two, or they can disseminate the information, it would be, um, more, um, viable if it would come from the expert of, uh, Mr. Mezler's mouth.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Um, I didn't hear a question, uh, Councilmember Cox. I think the, um, the request more so was for me to introduce this item, um, which I can certainly summarize, uh, what you have in, in the staff report, um, which I think really is intended in conclusion to answer, um, what brought this here in the first place. Uh, the question at the last council meeting, I think, was kind of around whether or not it's worthwhile considering, um, prepayment or, or payment of all the bonds, retiring the bonds associated with WID two, which is the former Baldi Mesa area, so that you have the flexibility to then merge, uh, the two districts effectively into being one. And this analysis took a look at, uh, the bond covenants and identified, uh, what bonds could be repaid if there were funds available to, uh, pay off those bonds. Uh, what this analysis shows you is that cash available for Fund Four Eleven, which is another one of your enterprise funds, one of those eighty-one funds that we talked about. Um, Fund Four Eleven is the former Baldi Mesa Water District area, uh, upon, uh, taking over the water districts. One of the LAFCO requirements, because you had, uh, for example, this type of debt service responsible from the, uh, Baldi Mesa area, uh, LAFCO actually requires that we keep the funds separate until this, uh, debt is retired. This analysis is in the staff report before you, effectively tells you right now is the wrong time to do it because you don't have sufficient funds available to retire the bonds. Uh, but maybe a more appropriate time to consider that would be in twenty twenty-six, when it's currently projected that you would have, uh, funds, uh, available to retire those bonds. And effectively doing so would then enable you to then eliminate what we achieved on number one, at least with respect to, uh, the WID two component, the fifteen dollars. Uh, but right now, with the, um, the, the passing of item one, you're able to level that, levy that fifteen dollars, which the collection of that fifteen dollars through the WID two then pays for the debt service of this bond.
I, I have a question. I don't know if anyone has a question. I know I spoke a little too much in the beginning. I don't know if anyone wants to take charge before I ask a question. I, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so, um, when we discussed this item and we were looking at the bonds and trying to, uh, what I'll call create, and I'll use the word justice just because we're in the mode of protest, but it's equanimity or equality and bring everybody to pay like the same types of fees and not feel ostracized. It was not shared then that the bonds were, the flows of monies were not enough. And I guess i- in my limited understanding of our deficit, which has been brought up on multiple occasions, uh, did not really fit into this. And so when I ask for clarification or something detailed to be contextualized within the realms of our budget being adopted, i- it would really allow, one, to say twenty twenty-six because if this is premature and there is no discussion, but as a council, we do agree that we need to discuss this. I would hope that, uh, Mr. Mezler would kinda chime in and say that then, that way we don't, you know, use the time irreverently, um, because there is no discussion that is amenable till twenty twenty-six.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I might say that if it was an accurate statement to suggest that we don't have funds available. But we in fact do have funds available and we accomplish that by doing what we accomplished in item one, which was actually levying the charges that serve as security for the bonds. And the security for the bonds get paid through that mechanism. What this item is attempting to do is address the question as to whether or not we should consider paying off completely all principal amounts outstanding of those bonds, which is a different issue than actually having sufficient funds to pay for the bonds. Pay for the bonds is pursuant to a schedule established in the indentures, uh, of the bonds, which basically is a payment over thirty years to pay off those bonds. The, the question that, that seemed to be asked at the last meeting was, as an alternative to allowing for the annual collection and payment, uh, of those debt service through twenty thirty-six, the question was more so related, do we want to pay that off early? And what this is, analysis is telling you, that question, you'd probably be better to ask in twenty twenty-six and then we can run the analysis to determine if it makes the best cash flow sense to pay those bonds off early.
Thank you for the clarification.
Rita, do you have any questions?
No, uh-uh.
Uh, so just so I understand correctly, uh, Mr. Mezler, then it makes more sense for us to plan and pay off in twenty twenty-six rather than at this time?
Consider in twenty twenty-six.
Consider, yeah. Okay, I understand. Now, thank you. Do we have any cards? Uh, so I need a motion and a second on this item, ten.
Madam Mayor, I believe this item is a discussion-only item.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, did I miss you?
No, no, I, I'm so sorry. Madam Mayor, I'm of the understanding that this item is a discussion-only item. Would it be synonymous to say receive and file? Or is that just for other standardized? There's no report.
There's no receive and file. Receive and file is an actual action. Uh, this was for discussion only, uh, Madam Mayor.
Well, my direction is request a motion and a second.
My apologies. I put that there.
Correct. So this was just for presentation?
Uh, or discussion?
Okay. So now we move on to item eleven. Purchase of an Algen Diesel Broom Bear Sweeper. Uh, Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council award Hawker Equipment as authorized distributor the piggyback purchase of an A- Algen Diesel Broom Bear Sweeper in the amount of three hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars under the SourceWell Formerly National Jo- Pow- Powers Alliance Contract Number One Two Two Zero One Seven Dash FSC.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Mr. Cox?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, no, Madam Mayor. Yes, um, this is, uh, I presume the sole source. If that was the case, and I also heard, being heard, thank you. I also heard it as that. Um, for dissemination of the public's understanding, I would really like an explanation of what the sole source is and how the city, um, mitigates when it looks for potential other companies to bring in, but in this case, when it's sole source, the capacity is just not there and how the city does that.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm gonna call, uh, Doug Matthews, who is the Public Works, uh, and Water Director. Uh, he is responsible for our overseeing the maintenance of our equipment along with our per- uh, purchase of equipment. Um, but I think generally speaking, and maybe Mr. Matthews can elaborate, uh, because my understanding of this particular item isn't technically a sole source, uh, because we actually relied on a joint powers authority that actually does mass bidding, uh, and we effectively piggyback on their, um, their, their larger bidding for this type of equipment and other equipment. But, uh, it's very likely I, I missed something, um, in this item, so, uh, Doug Matthews.
Yeah, I, I don't think I could've said it better than that. That's exactly right. It's not a sole source. We're just leveraging, uh, a cooperative out there that's gone through the bidding process and bidding process of this type of equipment.
Yeah, it does say, uh, piggyback purchase, um, but when I overheard the reading, uh, they said the word source. So I quickly jumped into the word sole source, and if there was a different bifurcation of that meaning and it was my first understanding, I definitely wanted clarification. So I'm glad you clarified and brought Mr. Matthews to assert what you have indeed understood. Thank you for that clarification. No further question.
Rita, did you have any questions?
No.
I have none.
No cards.
This item does need a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, um, move to approve the, uh, staff recommendations?
Second.
Purchase, yes, thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor? Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now we move on to item twelve. Um, I'm not sure if this is the same item as number, what was the other one? Five?
Mayor, this is a slightly different issue, uh, that Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez raised at the last meeting, and that was, while it's clear that the appointment of the mayor is done by a majority vote of the city council, there's no procedure in the policy manual as to how you go through the nomination process and how you count votes. That's always been left up to the discretion of the council in the past. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez raised that issue as to whether or not you'd like to put some sort of nomination procedure into, uh, the policy manual, or if you just want to, again, address it at the time of the, of the, uh, discussion comes up.
Uh, Rita, did you have, um, uh, did you wanna present this item, uh, item twelve?
I will. I'd be happy to.
Wonderful. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, here it goes. Here, I'm ready. Um, the city clerk will be in charge of the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem election procedure. The city clerk will, will call for nominations. Upon receiving nominations, and there are no further, it will be closed. She will call each council member by name for a vote. If a majority vote is received, which is three votes out of five, that person is deemed mayor. The same will be followed for Mayor Pro Tem. However, if it is not possible to receive a majority vote the first time, there will be two attempts to reach a majority vote. If this is not possible, then the twenty eighteen election rule will be put into, into enforce. And that twenty eighteen rule that I'm referring to is the one that I was introduced to when I was elected, and I consider it, uh, what had been the case prior to my election, where if there is no, um, majority vote, that it, whoever is in office will stand. They will remain in office. That's as simple as I can make it. But the, I, uh, I hope that's, uh, clarifies the procedure. I don't know. Is there anyone that would like to ask me questions?
I, yeah, I would. I, we need to have it in writing, but as I understand it, there's a motion and a second. And if it fails on a three-two vote, then they didn't get a majority vote. Then, although they failed, they continue in office. That is exactly what you just said. That is not, I don't think, what you meant.
Well, the only difference between that and what happened last December in twenty nineteen is that, uh, we went three times rather than twice. And that's the only difference, and the only difference was that rather than to call a vacancy for the office of either mayor and/or Mayor Pro Tem, that there should be, uh, a traditional, um, role or vote that has been done previously. And that was in twenty eighteen, uh, when you used the question that there was no second and there was no majority, and the person in office remained in office as a result of the lack of a majority vote. That is the tradition of the city of Victorville up to and including twenty eighteen.
Um, I think we've all acknowledged that we had a brand-new city clerk who hadn't conducted elections. She misunderstood and she said, "Since there wasn't a second, you continue in office." You have to be appointed by the council to continue in office. We all accepted it. We wanna head with it. But what you have proposed is, uh, if we make a present, if you make a proposal, uh, to appoint you as the chair or the president or the mayor, and it fails on a three-two vote, you would fail. But if you make a, for you as the Mayor Pro Tem and it fails, you would continue in office because it did receive a majority vote. That defies logic. I'm not sure if we need an explanation or some time, but...
The procedure would be the same for the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. There's no question about that. I'm simply saying that, that if there's no consensus, even after going, after having a nomination and having a vote and there's no majority vote, if there is no actual majority vote, then the consensus should be that the person who has held the office should remain in the office as a result of that. That is not my rule. That was the rule that I was introduced to in twenty eighteen when I was elected. I'm assuming, and, and my assumption may be incorrect, I am assuming that that was the traditional rule that was always used when there was no majority vote reached. You can correct me on that.
Yeah, it was never used. It was never been, you know, I've never heard of that rule. It was a mistake by the city clerk.
Well, that's the one that, um, that was said to me in December when there was no second.
We don't need to go back. It's over.
Uh, and there was no majority vote.
Well, but, you know, just make sure.
Because when it ever came together, uh, the city- Because when it ever came together, uh, the city clerk deemed that the person in office remained in office. I myself asked the question, what's the rule? And that was the rule that I was given at that point in time. So I am just simply saying, my assumption is, I'm not saying that it's correct. My assumption is that that was the rule that you abided by prior, uh, to twenty-nineteen. That was the last time that I had, I heard that rule, and it was the first time I, as a person on the City Council, had ever deemed it. So I'm just simply applying the things that you're doing or have done to make it simple in regards to the procedure. And the procedure is, as I said, uh, the city clerk is in charge, and she will be calling the nominations, enclose the nominations, uh, ask us to vote accordingly by name. If the majority vote is reached, then that person is elected. If, if that person does not get a majority vote, we go twice, uh, I think three times is too many times, twice. And then if still the majority vote is not there, then let's make it nice and simple. Let's not keep going all night long. I'm just simply saying, then that person stays in office, whoever that person may be, whether it be the mayor or the Mayor Pro Tem, or both. I, it, it has nothing to do with my selection. I'm simply following what I learned in twenty-eighteen, December of twenty-eighteen. This is the rule that I learned was in place, and so I'm simply saying, if we don't come to a consensus, let's not bicker about it or argue about it. Let us have a procedure that is simple, and everybody is fairly treated and knows what's going to happen. Uh, that, that's all I want. Uh, so I, I take advice from all of you, and you can ride it any way you want, but that is, I think, the easiest way, following basically what was followed in December of twenty-nineteen, with maybe two exceptions, but it is the same as it was listed in the revised memorandum. What I have said is basically the revised memorandum, except it isn't three times, it's only twice, and if there isn't a majority vote after twice, then that person stays in office because of the lack of a majority vote. But I have not changed anything. I simply followed the procedure of, uh, let us say, the revised memorandum that, of December second, twenty-nineteen. And I leave, that's all my advice, and that's how I've come to compile that information. So I, I believe there should be further discussion, but again, uh, I think that we need to have a clear procedure so we can do it nice and simple and quick.
Okay, I will ask, uh, council members if they have any questions at this time.
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, I, I guess because, um, well, first of all, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for requesting this agenda item. This was actually on the list of, um, uh, policies and procedures that I thought were worthy of consideration, and, um, w- we never got to that, so I'm very thankful that you brought it forward and we're here because it, it's a much-needed thing to make the process explicit so that we, um, all have an understanding as to what our organizational meeting should look like, and there's no surprises. Um, so I wanna make sure that I understand, Mayor Pro Tem, are you saying that you would like the procedure to essentially reflect what was in that revised, um, December two motion?
Basically, yes. I followed the same, except rather than-
Three times, two times?
Three times. I thought that was excessive. I thought that twice would be sufficient.
Okay.
And because I feel that someone who's already held the office, if there's no consensus, and there is no majority vote, that that person, already having the experience, should stay in the office. I'm, I'm just simply saying, I support whoever is in office, if, even if they do not receive the majority vote.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I just feel that it's a very simple, uh, procedure and a very, um, fair.
It, it is, in the sense that, that what was-
I'm saying it, it allows whoever's in office to feel, well, okay, no majority vote, but, uh, by rule, I know that I have the leadership. They will still continue.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, may I continue? So-
Again, you know, if, if, if you're not for that person, then I'm certain that there will be three people in consensus who would agree, no, we need a change.
Okay.
I think that everything-
Mayor Pro Tem? Mayor Pro Tem, can I get in here? Please. Um, thank you, thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem for that. So, um, just to be clear, um, that procedure that you're talking about is a very well-respected, um, procedure among many agencies and organizations in California, so I'm, I'm, I'm happy to hear that you're on board with that general concept. What happened in twenty-eighteen is, is different than I think w- what's being put forward here. What happened in twenty-eight was there was no vote. So there were, there were a motion for several people, and there were no seconds on either, so there was no vote. So what, what you're talking about here is if you don't, if you have a vote and there's no consensus, so, um, um, w- one of the things that I, um, I think it's important that we include in this is that nomi- and I believe that you actually touched on this, um, Mayor Pro Tem, is that the nomination, the, the pool of nominations, um, continues to be added to until there are no further nominations, so it would be very important, um, for the, um, that to continue so that no one feels like they're being cut off from participating in the process. Generally speaking, in parliamentary rule, it's in- improper to close nominations when there are nominations still forthcoming. That's why typically, um, the, uh, chair of the meeting will ask, um, two or three times, are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? So, um, that, that really is the fairest way to deal with that. I, I, um, I, I like the idea very much of, of voting on nominations rather than voting on motions, because then you don't run into the, the, um, the uncomfortable situation of, um, uh, motions dying for a lack of a second, and then you can ultimately have no vote, so that's, um, that's the benefit to this. Um, what I, I, um, instead of trying to tease out the actual language here tonight, I'm just wondering if it would be helpful if we were to direct the, uh, city attorney to draft something for our review and our input and feedback, and then bring it back to the council so we can amend it in any way that we think is suitable, that we're all in agreement with. But the other thing that I, that I would disagree with is that, um, i- in, in the appointment process, it's, it's customary for the chair to lead those. I, I can see the clerk doing it for the position of the mayor because you could have a sitting. I mean, although it shouldn't be a problem, I think maybe for aesthetics, it helps if the, the clerk does that one, but certainly for the Mayor Pro Tem, it should be the, um, the appointed chair that, that facilitates that appointment. That's customary in parliamentary rule.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones about, you know, having, uh, legal, uh, our attorney to look at it. The only thing that I would want to say before I would agree to that would be that, as a councilperson, each of us would have the right to, uh, ratify it if it, we liked it the way it was, but we also have the right to change it if we don't agree with the wording.
Well, yes, that's-
Because-
Yes, absolut- absolutely.
I do not believe in vacancies. I don't believe in leaving an office vacant, because that does not tend to give, um, a progressive image of the city, so if we're going to do an election, my, my opinion is, elect someone, whoever it may be, so that we can continue with the, with the business of the city. Not be at odds or in question as to who's in charge because there was no majority vote. And so that is the only problem that I see in the future, is this idea of leaving it as a, as a vacant office if you don't get the majority.
Yeah, but, but we've not had a situation where there wasn't a majority vote. The only situation that we've had is when there was
But I think you have to be progressive.
Uh, Ri- Rita?
You with the business of the city and not stop and think, who's gonna be mayor? And who's gonna be Mayor Pro Tem for the next meeting or the next meeting after that?
Yeah, Ri- Rita?
I'm trying to say, I would not want to have that.
Rita?
This is a personal opinion.
Okay, let me have the others, uh, uh, give their opinion on it. Uh, Ms. Jones, did you still have something or have you done?
I, I, I think we're largely on the same page, at least the Mayor Pro Tem and I are, and I, I, I'm wondering, um, Madam Mayor, if it might be helpful if we get to a point where we make a motion on this, is we have the attorney draft, um, um, a, a suggested, um, protocol on this, and yet ha- and then maybe do one or two more that has slight variations so we can look at it and, and pick from A, B, C. I think that'd be helpful.
Uh, Ms. Gomez?
Yeah, so I have quite a few things in their comments based on what I've heard tonight. Um, so if they're truncated, please remember the contextualization is because there's a conversation that was going on between Mayor Pro Tem and a council member, and so I took snippets and then drafted a little truncated formations, but if you were paying attention and listening, should be able to follow. Um, so, uh, looking at how we were, in my opinion, mincing this, I really thought when I looked at the summation of what Mayor Pro Tem suggested, when I read it through the eyes of my experience, it was synonymously just the same thing that we had just approved. That's what I saw. Um, it didn't come into clarification until her outcome was differing when she said, if we vote so many times, it could create some kind of havoc. If we do create so many times, and at the end, we have staff saying, well, you know what, the default is, we don't have a mayor, that's where the problem started. And so then I started looking at the relation of how we're looking at this, and then I'm thinking to myself, we have a policy that gives ample discretion to the majority of us to pull it as we wish. My experience with this last council was, the council wasn't able to ma- narrowly tailor it, and we brought in, um, like, we were talking about staff, the city clerk, the city manager, the city attorney, and I think that's when everything became head over heels. I mean, everything became topsy-turvy. We didn't have anything that was making sense. It's my, uh, ferv- fervent opinion and belief that the council should imagine itself, um, if it was in the best interest of self. How would we have approached this? Have we considered, um, allowing ourselves to debate among the five elected officials without having any expenses endured with a legal response from our attorney? Because we do pay him, yes, I know it's six thousand five hundred for the retention, but then any, anything extra always costs us more money. And if money would not be a factor, my opinion is, five elected, very intellectual beings that have not only the experience, but can create something within the group of every one of us, it's so transparent. What I have acknowledged in the past is, we give it to our leaders, or our, I'm gonna call you subordinate, sorry, I don't mean to demean you, but we, there is a hierarchy. It's first the people, then the council, then finally the CEO, and then the city manager. So our subordinates, it doesn't deem necessary to give it to our subordinates when we are the ones that are looking for the benefit of the people. When we give it out to the city attorney, we've seen a status quo type of mentality where there is no fairness because it's not being discussed out here. When we bring out and we try to mince words, we're reduced to three minutes. We don't have the amount of time to really express and get the opinions. Like, right now, perhaps someone may wa- may wanna interject, but that would be interruption. It would be lack of decorum. It would be unprofessional. And so we don't have that visibility when the attorney does it. Um, the other thing is, if you remember, no more than two times round in appointments and default, I mean, we have discretion. We can use it. Why can't we not argue and fight, and those are very hostile terms, I should probably render and say, why can't we excitedly and passionately discuss amongst two or three audience members, and they're looking at the insights of how we ideologically think? Bring them in that systemic way of thinking, and we can hash it out right here. We don't have to give it to the city attorney because he has the legal expertise of legality, because we know that our Mayor Pro Tem is gonna think about these words, and by God-
Your time is up.
So will I.
As long as the public elects five council members, and this council by a vote of three selects a mayor, that's all you need. The question is, is it conducted by the mayor or conducted by the city clerk? That's it. That's the democratic process. You don't want an office by default, or not because it was a second, or not because it was a tie vote. Had this run its procedure back when the mayor was selected, she would've been elected anyway. It's over. It's done. We don't need to bring it up. It was an air. I don't know how many times we have to keep saying it was an air. We don't need to repeat it again. What we do is, we have an election, we nominate individuals, so as long as three council votes, you have a new mayor, you have a new Mayor Pro Tem. Just that simple. What even the debates about?
We do have two speaker cards. First one is Maggie Martin. You're, you are. You're the one.
Thank you. Um, I'm here again. It's the same thing over and over again. Mr. Cox, you just said it perfectly. It was clear and, and final how it was voted. Uh, we've been voting for two-hundred-and-forty-four years. But see, the thing is, the mayor is just right below the governor, and the governor's right below the president, so the pres- the mayor wields a lot of power. The difference is now, we're a big city. We might need to ha- elect an actual mayor rather than have it appointed by five council members. We're not a little rinky-dink, uh, ranch anymore, so the power that the mayor wields here in the city of Victorville, it has to be done by the people. Blanca, Councilman, Councilwoman Blanca said, it's the people, the councilmen, but some of the councilpeople here, I'm not gonna say who, they think that they're, actually, they represent us, and they, they're supposed to be, we elected them to lead us, to tell us what to do. No, we have the last word. How I see, you're on top of the hill, and they wanna knock you down. That's all. Simple as that. Are you the mayor or are you our mayor? You have to decide wh- where you, where you stand. While we can have elections again, but when is this mayor gonna, when her, is her term gonna be over? We haven't had that clarified at all. We just hear that we're gonna do it over again. We didn't like the results. The person that was supposed to win didn't win, but when, are we gonna have elections again? Are you gonna be our mayor till twenty, till, till November? What's gonna happen? They haven't clarified that. We still don't know. Brought it up in the beginning of the meeting, bringing it up again, changing all the wording, the narrative. You're gonna take this off. It's, you're gonna be elected, you're not gonna, you're gonna be appointed, but where does that leave us? We're still confused. You said something, she said something, he said something, she said something. But what's gonna happen? Everybody's just speaking lawyer talk. But we wanna know, are you gonna have elections again next, in two weeks to see if you, they can knock you down, or are you still gonna be our mayor? That's what we wanna know. Nobody's ever clarified that. You're just changing the narrative right now, one year, two years, or whatever, but we really want to know. We want to know who we can look up to, who we can depend on, and who can represent us, 'cause if we don't like it, maybe we can change it ourselves. Thank you very much.
Maggie Martin.
Again, you know, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. First of all, I like what Mr. Cox said. You know why? Let's keep this simple, 'cause I'm gonna tell you, December third was, goes down on one of the most, goes down in my memory as one of the most ridiculous things I ever, out of control and ridiculous things I've ever seen in the time I've been coming to this council. Just keep it simple. If it's not broke, don't fix it. And, and, and I think that's kind of, I, I'm, I hope I'm echoing Mr. Cox's sentiment. Just keep it simple. Two-thirds vote, three votes, it's done, and, and for the love of God, just don't let anything ever occur like December third. That was, that was just absolutely- And- and for the love of God, just don't let anything ever occur like December third. That was, that was just absolutely horrific. So that's it. Thank you.
Well, this may come by surprise to you, but I actually agree with Romero. I actually agree with Romero Rodriguez, the commenter, the one that I added out with. I'm a fair and reasonable person. I am. What happened, happened. I don't like anybody bullying me. But right is right and wrong is wrong. And I do believe and I agree with him that you should give it to the people and that the people decide who they want. If I'm understanding him correctly, I- 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 I do believe that. Give it to the people. And there would not be any speculation, anybody doing anything or anything wrong back there. It's up to the people to decide. So I agree. Thank you.
Those are all the cards I have.
Uh, thank you. Uh, again, I have motion in a second, but I don't believe, uh, when it, oh, it's, oh, so I don't think we have a motion in a second. Okay. Oh, sorry. So I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to make a motion if the mayor is interested.
Well, as I mentioned initially, the fact that, and the fact that you, um, appoint your mayor by a majority vote, that's clear in the manual. The process of how you proceed through that vote was the problem last time we went through this process. And what happened was somebody made a motion. It was seconded. We went through that about three or four times, but there was no way to sort of count the votes. And I think what happens a lot of times is somebody might make a motion, get seconded, get the votes before another nomination might even be considered. I think what Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez is proposing is that we don't change the fact that you still need three votes to appoint the mayor and the mayor pro temp. That's clear. But to have a process whereby everybody gets to make all their nominations, and once all the nominations are closed, we basically poll the council members as to who they want to vote for. And that way you eliminate the process of the first person in line gets to be the mayor only by the function that you never get to that second, third, fourth vote. I think the- the process that Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez is suggesting eliminates that problem. And it allows for all the nominations to be on the table and then you all can decide on who's gonna get the most votes. She's suggesting go through that process twice. And if you don't get through that process, then the sitting mayor will remain in that position. That seems like it is a pretty logical way to handle this. If it's the council's desire, you could direct me to put that into writing. We're bringing back the policy manual. In any case, I could put that language in there. If the council wants to change it at that time, they certainly can change it.
Rita, are you in agreement to that?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful.
I- I would like to, um, add to that though, that we have, I mean, I like that, but I think it would be helpful to have, um, um, a- a, you know, a- a presentation of a few variations on that theme where, um, someone doesn't end up in office by default. Um, but that it get tabled to another meeting or just some- 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 some other options from which the council can choose from.
Certainly, I could draft some proposed language and then I think that would be essentially the option would be is if you don't come to a determination, you kick it over for a couple of meetings till everybody sort of sought out if they've changed their mind or not, and then vote on it maybe two meetings later. That could be another option. Gets you to the same place.
Yeah, bringing us some- something that we can, you know, mull over and decide what we- we all, um, would like it to look like. I think that's the-
The- the sitting mayor, the- the sitting mayor would continue until you either change it. And if you don't change it, then ultimately like two weeks or two meetings later, then it's over. The mi- the sitting mayor continues.
Yeah, because that memo stated that.
Right.
Mostly, I don't know who received it, but I have a mayor.
Uh, you- you always need to have a mayor and a mayor pro temp. And so if it, if you can't agree on voting for somebody different, then the existing person would stay in office.
I don't think that was the revised memo.
I mean, I would like to also speak. I mean, we've spoken out of turn by now and I, I'm going to go ahead and.
Was my turn to speak?
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
But he spoke. I had spoken. Okay, so then we're, um, we leave it at that? You will dra- draft?
I can certainly draft that if that's the direction of the consensus. If I get three people, I think Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez was in favor of that. I will draft the, uh, policy manual. I'll put that language in there and give you some options that you could change those out if you wanted to add some additional time whereby instead of making sure that you come to a vote on the night of the election, say two meetings and then consider it again. And after that, if that doesn't happen, then the sitting mayor would- would remain as that position.
And- and who presides over the process as well?
Uh, well, in terms of doing the nominations, I believe the city clerk should do it certainly for the mayor. And I think your suggestion was that the mayor, once the mayor is chosen, the mayor then presides over the mayor pro temp.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
All right, what was the question?
A motion to?
It'd probably be helpful, given this discussion, to have a motion in a second, yes.
So I need a motion in a second in order to allow our attorney to draft.
Yeah, so if I could just cut to the chase, Madam Mayor, uh, so I- I- I move that the council, uh, direct the city attorney to draft, um, a, uh, suggested policy and procedure with regard to the appointment of the mayor and mayor pro temp to reflect the discussions that we've had this evening.
I second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez. Any further comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, first of all, I wanna clarify the record again. No one has ever proposed removing the mayor. Keeps coming up, but it's not true. Secondly, I wanna make it very, very clear that in November, there's a reorganization after the election and this council cannot bind future councils. Just wanna make that clear. So after the election in November, it will come up again. It's a matter of law. I get it. No matter what you do. So whatever you do has no effect on the mayor or the mayor pro temp. And in November, whatever you do has no effect on what the new council will do. I'm not sure what this is all about.
Yep.
That's right. It just remains to be seen if I'm reelected.
May I comment, Madam Mayor? Yes, yes. A- and I- and I'll do it very quickly. I- I, um, join in Mr. Cox's comments with, um, regard to the audience member who continually, ad nauseam, talks about, um, some conspiracy to remove our mayor. It is utter baloney. I support our mayor. Every council member behind this dais supports our mayor. Let that be clear now and forevermore. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, so this is the first in any of the agendas that I've seen a transcription, a very novice, might I add. In my bachelor's and my master's, I did a lot of transcriptioning. One page took forever. So my, um, thing is, who was the transcriptionist here? I mean, I'm looking at, uh, one, two, I'll say three pages. It definitely took time. Wh- what were the concerted efforts to bring a transcription of this nature? I don't really know. Um, but I- I'm interested in knowing the time expended from the beginning to the end. A transcription is not five minutes. I guarantee you, I've done transcriptions and they're not very quick. Um, what was the involvement? What was, you know, what was the general purpose or consensus of whoever thought about bringing this? Whether it was good, bad, disadvantaged, no disadvantage? And lastly, um, the pay person who did this, I know you're paid. How much was that person? I mean, did we, I- I'm hoping we didn't have, uh, Keith Mezler doing the transcription, cause it's very costly. I'm hope, I'm hoping we kind of were amenable to who we had do this. Um, because I'm telling you, from experience, a transcription does not take five minutes. Especially up to here and make sure you're writing and going back and forth. And if people are looking at me like I'm crazy, when you take your bachelor's and your master's on transcription and languages and culture with linguistics, you understand one hundred percent where I'm coming from. If you have absolutely no clue, you're just gonna think of me as someone who just doesn't know what she's talking about. But to me, this is something that I bring that no other council member has. And so I pride myself in that. And like any other council brings to the table that I don't have, and I take pride in that type of teamship. So really, I- I'm serious about transcription.
Oh, the council members has a bachelor or masters?
Uh, no, that's not what I said. You de- decontextualized what I said. I said the- the linguistic aspect.
Oh, I don't speak Spanish, so you're right.
Of having a bachelor's in linguistics and working on my master's for linguistics is something that I bring to the table. And I'm, I'm, like I said, please don't decontextualize what I'm trying to say. If it sounds like a little bit, who cares? I- I'm telling you the importance of this that's coming here. So I just wanna know and acknowledge the fact that we're spending money on a transcription. I mean, is it good? Is it not good? I know it was a purpose, especially when we're talking about the mayor and this. I mean, I don't even understand why we have a transcription in play. Just asking for clarification. Yeah, what- what is the purpose? Like, what's the reasoning behind?
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor and members of the council, the reason for the transcription is because, uh, for quite some time, and this is certainly not the first time, uh, but for quite some time now, some of the questions that have been, uh, raised by, uh, this council um, require a review to- to understand what in fact specifically the direction of the council was. Uh, because of the nature of the conversations, uh, have a tendency to go back and forth. And, uh, the original motion changes, uh, to become a different motion or a different direction. Uh, we've actually been routinely bringing you back, uh, transcript of exactly what has been said so that it's abundantly clear when we do have the item before you for discussion, uh, what it is the discussion is- is supposed to be about. So, uh, that- that transcription serves as a backup, uh, to, uh, assure that, uh, you're- you're talking about what- what it is you asked to be talking about. Uh, as far as, um, who transcribed it? Yes, you're right. I did not, uh, transcribe it. Um, but we do have staff that is, uh, trained, uh, clerical support staff in the city clerk's department is trained to do these transcriptions. And you'd be surprised. I don't, it certainly doesn't take as long as I think you believe it does, um, because they are trained. We- we do have an audio system. Uh, we're able to, uh, type quite fast, uh, and keep up with the actual, um, uh, audio of the, tape that we're effectively listening to. So I don't know the cost, but if the council desires, I can certainly get a cost for you.
I'm- I'm sure this council is not amenable, but as a CPRA or California Public Records Request, that would be information that would be provided for the public. I wasn't trying to instigate and said if the council would deem possible, cause as people, one-on-one, we can ask you to provide that information and, um, that information would be granted. Okay, so anyways, like finishing off, um, I appreciate the fact that we brought this, but like Mr. Cox says, I mean, you're right. We're not gonna be bounded. Next council can do whatever they want.
Okay, very good. So, um, now I move on to item number thirteen.
I do have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez. Roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to item number thirteen, public comments.
Romero Rodriguez?
Hello, and hello to all thirteen viewers on YouTube. I was really disgusted on the last few weeks that we had the teleconferencing. I've had teleconferencing. I've been part of the teleconferencing through my organization for many years. And- and it seemed like somebody that was fa- you know, somebody that didn't really get the grasp of it was in charge of it. They were using a free service. It's so easy to monitor, but every single ma- meeting was very, very low in quality. Couldn't hear anything. And a lot of those things were done on, I believe, I don't think they was- they was done accidentally. It's the narrative. The screen doesn't work. The, on YouTube, when I logged in YouTube, the screen came on. It didn't say nothing about live. It didn't say nothing. You had to click on video to go on YouTube. So there's a lot of these little things that come and pop you, pop at you that you can't really see be part of the meeting. I don't know why we haven't fixed that camera. I don't know why we don't have this thing televised with the local- local channels. Heck, we have a lot of money, but it seems all the time when the, you have to, you wanna get communication to the people, it's just not there. You call, you don't get the information. We're left in the dark unless we come up here and ask, but everybody just stares at us. We send memos, we call people, they, we never get the answer back. But the thing is, that screen should be working, that camera should be working, or we should have channel of, of, of the local channels televising these meetings so we can look at them all day, so we can clearly hear. But I believe the last three meetings that we had on the phone should be nullified completely. Cause they were just a complete, complete waste of everybody's time. And I don't, I saw a lot of people purposely trying to echo the phones, not turning them off. But that can be controlled very easily. You mute everybody and you can see the line lights up. I've- I've had meetings with three hundred people. And we didn't have half the- the chaos that was- was going here. So the thing is, I don't think it was an accident. It's not a conspiracy, but you know what? A lot of things don't wanna be found out about the city, but I- I believe that if everything gets, goes together well, this can run properly. I think we really need to change the narrative in this beautiful, big city. It's not a little ranch. It's not a little hometown anymore. It's a big metropolis, but it's not a million people city. It's just a hundred and twenty-two thousand, not forty thousand. So we can actually say hi to the sheriff, say hi to the mayor, say hi to whatever. And the thing is, when we elect the next city council person, council member or whatever, is that council member gonna be the council member of the city? Or are we gonna be able to say like that gentleman that spoke, she's our councilman or councilwoman? That's very important. A lot of people don't see it that way. But how do most of you, most of the people see you? Do they reflect?
Hi, Ms. Up.
Would you reflect what you guys are bringing to us? Thank you very much.
Paul Marsh?
Hello again. I'm gonna be really quick. Um, a lot was discussed today. A lot, a lot transpired. Um, but I- I- I, one thing I do wanna say, and then I'm gonna start talking about myself. Okay, I'm gonna get a little selfish here. Um, but one thing I do wanna say as far as the police and everything in our city, you know, I know that there's bad, I mean, there's, there's, there's things, there's, there's things that need to be worked on in every area of life, you know? But I guarantee these people that degrade the police department, downplay, you know, degrade the first, as soon as they have an emergency, they're not calling Ghostbusters. They're calling the police. They need help. Okay, so I just wanted to say that. Okay, now about me. Okay, we're talking about, um, health and safety. I live on Gold Springs. Okay, from what I was told, uh, a few years ago, that Gold Springs was a pretty big project street, residential street in Victorville. Okay, we have, um, we have, uh, community watch. We have the, uh, community watch. We have, um, you know, it, we have a very wide street, but the problems that we're facing right now, and we really need help, and I would like to get some help, is that we have our children can't, my children, my grandchildren, children can't play out front, even though we have a big front yard. Why? Because we have a wide street and everybody treats that street like a thoroughfare. I mean, they come blaring down the street. Okay, that's one thing that I would like to get some help, you know? Um, um, we have our- our mailboxes are getting broken into. We have our mailboxes are getting broken into, you know? Every time I go out there, every day, our mailboxes are open, you know, and I'm just wondering, okay, do we get all our mail that day? Okay, that's another thing. Firecrackers are going off. Councilwoman Jones, I mean, she alluded to that. I mean, it sounds like bombs going off. This is June. Well, it was, it was actually, I mean, it was May. You know, we're just getting into June, you know, the loud parties, firecrackers going off all around the neighborhood. This is the reason why we need the resources. We need extra resources, okay? The trash, the dumping, you know, this is why, okay? Another thing that I would like to be considered, there's actually three things. That was one, here's number two, okay? It was, it was mentioned by Councilmember Cox, he's talked about it a few times, as far as property upkeep. Now, I don't know if the city is still in a drought situation, water-wise, I don't know, okay? We're trying to be, we're trying to be good citizens, follow the regulations and water every other day, but in the heat, our grass is dying. So I'm trying to keep the grass going and everything and keep it looking nice, okay? But we're caught in a catch-22, you know? Is there, can that be relooked at to where we might be able to water more, you know, for those who have, that want to? You know, we're paying the bill.
Hi, Ms. Up.
Oh, shoot. Okay. Okay, I'll email. Thank you.
Jonathan Morales? Ruth Cardova?
Elsie, I want to thank this council very, very much for voting on the public safety sales tax measure. But I want the community to know that I know and I understand their emotions. It was very, very difficult for me, working the 1990 riots and being held accountable for the wrongdoing of the officers. What I want the public to know is I don't condone the behavior of these officers. They will stand trial for what they did wrong. But that they also have to separate their personal feelings from their professional ones. And personnel issues are a separate issue. They will deal with their wrong, and each department will deal with the wrong and criminal behavior of their own officers. It is never accepted by the good deputies or the good law enforcement officers. We don't accept that behavior. And let me tell you something, we deal with it ourselves. We don't like that. It's very difficult to do a job and being held accountable for the wrongdoing of somebody else. They attack you. They wrongfully accuse you. I was a single parent, working double shifts, my little boy very young, working very, very hard from being homeless. I was a very, 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 very good senior deputy, and I did not tolerate any unlawful acts, not whatsoever. I would be the first one to initiate an investigation, but I want to promise these people that our sheriff's department, we have a fine, fine sheriff, John McManton, and he cares so much about the life and safety of the community. And he does take care of his deputies. And when there's a wrong done by his deputies, he makes sure that he addresses those issues immediately. He's an honorable man, he's an honorable leader, and all the leaders under his wing are fine leaders, and so are the deputies. So I ask that this community here in the high desert give them a chance. And I'd like to thank this council for giving us all a chance and giving the people a chance to be safe. And you, Rita Ramirez, way out there, this is, it's, this is true. I mean, this is real, what's going on with the riots. And I don't know if you're by yourself over there, but what I want, would want you to do is have a plan, have an escape route. If you're off the old woman's road, there's only one, one road, and if that road is disabled, there's no way for you to get out. So have an alternate plan because the people out here, they care about you. You're behind the teleconference, you can't see what's going on over here, and aside all other issues, you're a beautiful woman, and I hope that you recover very, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie Barton? Those are all the cards.
Cards. At this time, then I will request or ask our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Members of the Council. First of all, I just want to say thank you for all your patience and cooperation over the period of time that we've been closed down now that we're reopened with some precautionary measures in place. It's actually nice to be able to have a meeting with the public and be able to communicate even more clearly than.
Give him the microphone a little, please.
So thank you for that. The other items that I had are, speaking of the reopening of our Victorville Small Business Assistant Grants. May 19th, the city council approved an allocation of more than $445,000 from our federal CDBG funds to be used for grants to help small businesses negatively impacted by COVID-19. The grant awards up to $15,000 each are available to help our small businesses continue their services and retain their employees. The businesses must be located in a CDBG target area, have 20 employees or less, been in operation for at least one year, and able to demonstrate income loss due to COVID-19. Preference will be given to businesses in Old Town area and minority and female-owned businesses. Applications will be available at the end of this week at vv.city reopen. That's on our city website. Also regarding illegal fireworks, we've officially launched our illegal fireworks campaign two weeks ago. We did have to slow things down this last weekend because of all of the issues that were occurring in the community, but we're back up. New this year, we're enforcing the new $1,000 fine approved by the city council several months ago. Our campaign combines public awareness with enforcement. Our campaign slogan is "If you light it, we'll ride it," because fireworks scare pets, stress vets, start fires, and cause injury. We've started the messaging on our social media. Soon you will see our messaging on bus shelters and VVTA buses and on light poles and banners. And we're planned, we're planned a targeted outreach to neighborhoods where we are receiving a greater number of illegal firework reports. As of May 31st, we've received 16 reports, issued two citations, and confiscated 30 pounds. And that was after having to slow down because of all the protesting. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So you did say that the applications will be issued till the end of this week for the small businesses?
They'll be available online at the end of this week. So we're actually taking the application, starting the application process.
Did that one person contact you?
We have, we have.
Wonderful. Very good. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have discussion and possible action regarding upcoming agenda items. This is for agendizing items. I'll start with Councilmember Cox.
Okay. I wrote, a speaker made a statement, and so what I want is to get this on the agenda because I think we need to hold our city manager accountable. I just found out that the city paid a 19 or 20 million dollar fine. One of the speakers, I mean, if it did, we need to have that on the agenda and find out. If it's not true, then I don't have any idea for the agenda. Oh, I'll go back and listen to the tape. Just found out, quote, that the city just paid a 19, 20 million dollar fine. How the public gets bad information. No, it's not true. The public is listening.
I have nothing to agendize. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, unlike what you heard, Mr. Cox, we did have someone that was read on the record by the clerk, and that person wanted us to consider an advisory board that would be composed of community members if the proposed 1% sales tax were to pass. And if that were the case, the proposition would include to have it agendized if it's so deemed possible that this council would like to do so, no later than when we get the certified votes from the county elections office of San Bernardino. That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion by.
Second, because that's what we did last time. We agreed to form a committee if it was approved, right? Yeah, that's exactly what the city did. No reason they wouldn't do the same thing.
I'm not sure that's what was meant. What kind of a committee are you talking about?
Was everyone aware that the city clerk read something? That's what I'm referring to. It's not my personal anything. I heard someone want to add an advisory board, an advisory board committee. And so I'm just being the conduit to say, if it deems for this council to approve it based on the annunciation that we had by email, and she read it in, I don't see why not. And it's not me, it's not my personal anything. I'm just trying to hear someone who wants something and being the voice for that. That's all.
It just seems a little premature. I'd like to see the funding first. Oh, I'm sorry. I think it's premature. I think we need to have the funding first before we begin to carve out everything.
I take it, so we hope we have discussion. Isn't it true at the last November election where Major Kay went, that a part of that agreement was that there would be an advisory committee?
Keith, do you recall that?
Based on the fact that it had to be approved first.
I don't recall. I have to go back and research that.
So I do have a motion by Councilmember Gomez and second by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Is that if it's approved? Not form it now, but.
Yes, would you might, would you like for me to repeat it? Because I can do so, because it had those words there.
I don't think you clarified. You want to form the committee, I agree, but it's after the November election.
That's exactly what it's, I'm sorry if my personality gets in the way and it confuses the interpretation, but like I said, yes, if it were to prove, if it were to pass, I don't think an advisory takes any money. But I don't know, of course, maybe it does because you need staff members. I wasn't considering staff members. I was just considering an advisory of people. Yes, that's the same motion.
Running at a time. Okay. I'll take the vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Sure, aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez?
Rita, are you there?
Yes, but I didn't hear the motion. What was the motion? Is it a discussion?
Discussion of an advisory board.
Okay, a discussion, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, I vote yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Ah, yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Rita, did you have anything to agendize?
Not this time.
Okay, you did enough. Okay, okay, thank you.
No, I've had enough. No, no.
I don't have anything either.
No, I have nothing.
I don't have anything either, so reports from council members? Jim, do you have?
No, I have met us from different meetings, and very difficult because everything's by phone. Get the minutes, it's not clear really what happened, and so I get those minutes, I distribute it, but I have nothing to distribute. So hopefully next month we'll be back to.
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. So there have been repeated comments over time from an audience member averring that there's racism behind this dais, and they're largely directed at two council members. And I'm puzzled by these comments, and here's why. Last May, I spoke with Member Gomez behind the dais, and in follow-up to that discussion, I texted her and quote, "I think we're long overdue to get better acquainted, your thoughts." And Councilmember Gomez was so kind to respond, and we set up a time to meet on the 30th. Prior to that, I texted Member Gomez, "Hi, I've been thinking about you a lot today and believing you to be a woman with a strong sense of justice. I hope today brings you much peace and joy." Her response was, "I wish you the same graciousness that I received from you this memorable Memorial Day, and from my family to yours, peace and prosperity." In June, while I was on vacation, I texted Councilmember Gomez because I was thinking about her, and I wrote, "Good afternoon, Blanca. I was just thinking about you and thought I'd send wishes your way for a lovely evening." And her response was, "You are the sweetest and kindest soul I've encountered all day. Your kind thoughts have brought joy to my heart," and so on and so forth. And then, "I gracefully accept the positive energies that you have sent my way." So these texts have been going on for a year. This is just some of them. They've been going on for a year, each of us showing genuine care for the other. During Mayor Pro Tem's illnesses, I've texted her a number of times to check in on her, sending her scripture of encouragement. And she seemed genuinely happy to receive them. I also had a custom flower arrangement made for her. I couldn't deliver it because there was some confusion as to her movement or transfer from one place to another. In late February 2020, this council participated in a governance relations workshop. Mayor Pro Tem was absent. The same audience member was in the audience there. The workshop was very productive, and we all agreed to comport ourselves to specific professional norms. This audience member was present for all the training and knows of the effort underway for the council to work faithfully together as a team. Knowing all this, it strains credulity that this audience member continues to conjure up and spew falsehoods. This audience member appears to be bent on misleading the public, and for what reason? It certainly be, seems to be an effort to create division and ill will on the council. This cannot be good for our city, and I hope the public will see this drivel for what it is. Nonetheless, honest differences of opinion are normal and to be expected. Holding to a different view is not in and of itself racism. That said, having grown up the target of continual blatant and cruel racism, I am particularly sensitive to the hurt and harm it brings to any person. So I am willing to meet with this audience member to hear his concerns. I would like to learn specifically what I've said or done here that transgresses justness. I would be happy to meet with him privately to have a wholesome conversation about his concerns. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes. "In unison with the nation who is protesting, grieving, and demanding justice for George Lloyd and all the proceeding, I can't breathe. Deaths and others during similar circumstances witnessed and not witnessed in the United States, I will reserve the remainder of my time rendering my condolences and respect in silence." En unión con las protestas, acompáñenme en silencio. Now, please join me. I can't breathe.
I, I need to continue.
Still, okay. Who are you calling, Gloria?
Uh, no, uh, Blanca just called, a moment of silence, but, uh, the, the audience is, uh, you know, we need to continue.
Okay.
Going to respect what you said, and I'm gonna end with the words, "No puedo respirar," I can't breathe, thank you, Leah.
Thank you, tha- that was very thoughtful of you. Uh, Rita, do you have, uh, anything to report?
Uh, no, but I would like to say that, uh, we should always honor those who have died, especially those in the, in the question of violence, and those of the virus, and those who have saved us. I am so proud of all the protesters who have set out to prove that in America, we still have rights, and that people of all colors work together, support each other, and that we are together in making our country stronger and better for everyone. Let me say, it is a sad moment for everyone. For I know for those who have lost their families and members as a result of the virus, and those who have lost their lives as a result of violence, let me say, may God bless them, and may they, may God give them peace. Amen.
Amen, thank you, Rita.
Yes, that's all.
I don't have anything, so, oh. Thank you, Madam.